Good morning, everyone. Thanks for being here and appreciate your patience. It's always nice to have visitors. We've got a pretty exciting program this morning, and more about that in just a moment. The time is now 9:45, and a quorum of the board's present. The State Board of Education meeting on February 11th is hereby called to order. First item is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Do I have a motion?
No move.
By Lupe, Cassandra. Any additions, deletions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same? Thank you. And before I introduce Mertz, who's going to introduce us? What's this about Caleb and new grandkid or something here did I hear?
Oh, yes. I'm adding to my grandkid collection. I didn't know you were going to say that. But Sunday Caleb Philip Schneider was born to our son. I'm getting another one in April, so you might have to hear about that, too. Everyone is great, so thanks.
Thank you.
What's the count?
Five in one family and the third in another family is on the way, so eight. Last year I had two grandchildren. Now I'm going to have eight.
So times change.
Merry Christmas.
That's right.
And she's still always smiling. That's the thing we love about Mertz.
That's the best part.
Well, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, thanks, Mike. To my left, as you all know, is Mike Flanagan. He is the chairman of the board. He's the state superintendent. To his left, the president of the board, John Austin. John resides in Ann Arbor. Next to him, the board's vice president, Cassandra Albridge from Rochester Hills. Dan Varner is on his way. He's from Detroit. He's the board secretary. And then moving around the table, Lupe Ramos Montini, board member from Grand Rapids. This year's Michigan Teacher of the Year is Gary Abud Jr. He's from North High School in the Growth Point Public Schools System where he teaches physics and chemistry. Across the table, Greg Ruff. He's the governor's education advisor. Eileen Weiser, board member from Ann Arbor. Kathleen Strauss, board member from Detroit. Michelle Fecto, board member from Detroit. She is also the board's NASB delegate, National Association of State Boards of Education. Next to me is Richard Zilee. He's from Dearborn. He's the board's treasurer. Thank you.
Thanks, Mertz. Couple of things. First of all, congratulations to board member Richard Zilee. We really appreciate your taking on the work for NASB as the chair of the Rural Study Group. And I know you've committed time to visit rural districts in the state, understand their issues, and it's a big win for Michigan to have you in that leadership role, so thank you. John, I thought, did a great job with the Ed Alliance yesterday on laying the groundwork for the finance work here in the department. And I could tell it was received really well, so that's a great beginning of that. I want to fess up. Some of you already heard this on WJR this morning. Yes, I have thrown my hat in the ring to become the Pistons' coach. And Paul W. kept going with it. And it was to try to keep him on his heels because I didn't want to ask him too many tough questions, although he has a way. I was appreciative of the fact that he repeated the fact that I thought I was pulling the right chord when I said, "Well, Doug Rothwell and the business leaders are for the smarter balance." And then he said, "Well, if Doug Rothwell's for smarter balance, it's got to be the right thing." So maybe that'll help us get over the line. I know the board has done a lot of work, as well as Wendy and our team here, to make that a reality. I'd like to recognize Representative Tom Cochran, who's in the audience, sir. Thank you for being here. And I know he's here actually for the Chavez resolution and didn't realize it was until this afternoon when they're in session, so I wanted to at least recognize him for making the time and being here to join us today. So thank you very much. Former fire chief here in Lansing at one time, so... And now you're allowed to grow this, right? You're probably...
I'm asking longer.
I thought we'd just show... Marty was thinking we'd show one little thing here because it's the truth. Tim Skulbick said that I'm incompetent, and we might as well get it on the table and be done with it here.
As long as you've been soup, you've talked about extending the school year behind... or ahead, 180. You've failed miserably. How come?
I'm not a voting legislator.
But your job is to get votes in the legislature.
You've gotten some.
I mean, you've got some.
We've gotten the Michigan merit curriculum through, which was a big deal.
But I'm talking about extending the school year.
I think they're just not willing to take it on. I mean, yeah, you're right.
Because? Because of pushback back home.
Exactly. I mean, this is where I think the hypocrisy is. It's with no malice, but even parents, "Oh, my gosh, Korea's doing better than we are in Finland." We're not in school. I mean, when you add Korea not only having more days, but their whole... This isn't about their system. This is the culture of tutoring at night, by the way. There's whole other things that go on in other countries, and we're not even willing to put the days in. So you're right. I've failed miserably in terms of getting them to go more days a year, but it is what it is, and I'm going to do what I'm doing right now, which is keep pitching it.
Okay. Failed miserably, and moving on. But I would hope, and especially with the representative here, I do think it really puts our teachers at a disadvantage. There's a lot of... My daughter's a teacher, as many of you know, a public school teacher here in Michigan, and it's demoralizing when we get compared internationally, and there's kind of a general criticism. I tried to handle a little bit of that on JR this morning. It comes up all the time. But, you know, Finland's doing 220 days, and Korea's doing 200 days, and they're also tutoring at night, the nature of the culture for South Korean parents. It's hard for our teachers to work in that environment. It takes time. So, anyway. But I might as well get on the table. Since I'm a miserable failure, I'm going for that Pistons' job. That's where I was connecting with that. He's such a nice guy. And then two things I really want to do. I was going to wait till later, but I know the audience collapses a little bit at that time, and I thought if I don't recognize Carol Eastlick, who's retiring at the end of the month, would you stand up, Carol? She has been a jewel for this department in ways that people just couldn't imagine. So thanks, Carol, for your service. Twenty-eight years, literally the go-to person in the department. And then, you know, I'm disappointed on this next one, but I get it. We have a young, rising star in the department who was lured away, you know, Educational Testing Service. It's a problem in our second floor that testing is such a big thing federally that they pay very well. They look for the best talent they can get, so it really is a compliment to the department to have one stolen from us, who, as I said, is not only an existing leader, who put together that assessment report that the legislature required by December 1, but does such a grand job for us, and we'll miss him. But Vinstein, I want you to be able to stand up, and thanks for your service, too. And we have a bunch of openings down there for that reason. It's hard to fill these, but I think actually when we get over this, and I hope we do get over this smarter balance issue and have that appropriated and move on, it'll give some stability so that our folks will be encouraged to be here for the long run. So... But I'm not surprised you were recruited, and as I said, it's a source of pride, not only for you and your family, but for us that they thought so highly of you. Okay. This is our first item today, and I guess extending personal privilege for a second. Mike and Phil are two people that I've known for many years. John was good enough to start out with what I think are the two best thinkers on these issues of school finance in the state and, in some cases, in the nation. But I do want to bring out, you know, when it comes to Mike and I, we had this old Boston College Notre Dame rivalry for years, and we haven't really been on each other's back too much recently. But the irony is U of M professor Phil Kearney is a big Notre Dame fan. I don't know how you exist in that environment. Does it? Yeah. Well, I wore that tie for you today, just to have that. And I can't thank you enough for being here. And John, then sincerely, even after he left that alliance yesterday, I said, you know, a lot of people don't know this, but John's basically a policy wonk in the best sense and very thoughtful about these issues and is genuine in his attempt to move the ball on this this year. And I thought appropriately took the politics out of this by saying the report done after the election and yet have the discussion now so people can start to be thinking about this. And, you know, I'm certainly... I'm a little disappointed and said on this show with... I'm not sure why we would be giving tax relief at a time when the schools need the money so much, so I hope we could stand up to that, but it seems like it's got legs of its own, and that would just be a small dose. But I also appreciated how John pointed out, this isn't just about money for money's sake. He said it here, and he said it again yesterday. It's to have our outcomes be better, you know, so that we actually can attribute resources to better outcomes and to be thoughtful about how that is. And I thought your remark about early college in particular was really well-placed because every child in this state should have an opportunity for an early college opportunity. We're free, in effect, community college after a five-year program, and appreciate your advocacy for that. And I think I'll turn it over to John to kind of make the formal introductions here of our guests.
Is there anything more I need to say? I appreciate your comments. And Mike's alluding to, I went to the Ed Alliance yesterday, basically invite them into this public discussion that we want to have about what are the issues, what are the major challenges we face, and what do we do about it in terms of the way we organize and finance and put resources to find education to get the outcomes we want. Appreciate your comments, too, on the radio. You didn't say Paul W. Smith was... It was very good, I thought, that you pointed out the... If business leaders from Michigan and the teachers' unions, the MEA, are for something like the Common Core or the assessment, it's got to be a good thing. He was a little less familiar with the teachers' union that you were talking about, and we don't work with them very much, but he was... He took heart that the business leaders from Michigan were for, so that was a good way to frame the argument. But as Mike indicated, I'm delighted to have Mike and Phil, and I'll introduce them a little more formally here in a second, to start this process. We did agree last month that we, as a board, certainly want to spend the next nine months paying attention to what the major issues are in the way we organize, finance, and support education, as we're seeing the stress put on our schools and effects on outcomes. We want to understand what those are from a thoughtful perspective so that we can do better in the way we organize and run the education railroad here in Michigan and looking for the ideas for the major direction of improvement and change, and so we can make our best recommendations to the governor and legislature, but also as a team effort here in Michigan, better understand where we need to go and how we need to get there to improve educational outcomes. So I'm delighted that at this first meeting, we have Peter Anizio and Phil Kearney. Mike is a professor of education policy at the College of Education at Wayne State University, teaches school finance. He's been assistant state superintendent for research and policy at the department and was Governor John English' education policy advisor. Phil Kearney is professor emeritus at the University of Michigan, Ann Arbor. He's been in many roles there, associate dean of the school. He also served as associate director of the National and Deputy Director for the Institute for Educational Leadership in Washington, D.C. And Phil and Mike, they co-authored a book a few years ago, "Education Reform and the Limits of Policy," which I don't know if we want to describe the limits of policy, but they are, as Mike said, probably among the nation and our state's most thoughtful analysts and workers in the education arena. So thank you for joining us and sharing your perspective on... And we offered... Come on up, Mike and Phil. We offered these folks and others that we're going to hear from the pretty open-ended charge that was in our resolution that we passed. What are the major issues and trends that are affecting our education outcomes for things related to the way we're organizing and financing schools? What, if anything, can we learn from other states and other ways of organizing education? And what would be some recommendations from your perspective about major directions for change and improvement so we get better outcomes, as Mike said? So thank you for joining us, please.
Thanks, John, and good morning. This morning, what we would like to do is split our time into two large pieces. First, about 30 minutes presenting our ideas and accompanying information and data. And second, maybe another 30 minutes for follow-up and discussion with you about what we've had to say. We'll also split that first part, this first part, into two smaller pieces. I'm going to take about 10 minutes to offer some thoughts about an organizing framework that we think might be helpful to you. And Mike, we'll use the remaining 20 minutes to offer some specific information and some ideas about needed reforms in Michigan education. First, let me talk about the organizing framework. As we thought about the issues that the state board faces as it moves forward in its examination of school finance and organization in Michigan, we thought it might be useful for you to spend a few minutes sharing with you a framework. A framework or, if you will, an analytic scheme that we have found useful in our own past efforts of looking at reform in Michigan education. And the framework is based on four predominant policy values that have long undergirded American education and certainly Michigan education. We think that consideration of these four policy values might serve you well, as you set out to do what you have to do. The four policy values are equity, adequacy, efficiency, and choice. And let me say a brief word about each. The first of the four values, equity, is not necessarily equality, although sometimes it calls for that. Equity is concerned with fairness and justice, justice and fairness. It raises the question of whether the current finance system is just and fair to the citizens' taxpayers who have the responsibility of providing the resources necessary to offer quality education programs in our public schools. It also raises the question of whether the system is just and fair in its allocation of those resources among the more than 500 school districts, the more than 3,000 public schools, and the more than 1.5 million public school students in the state of Michigan. And perhaps equally important, it also raises the question of how just and fair the system is in actually delivering a quality education program to each and every child and young person who goes through our public school system. The second policy value in this framework, adequacy, is a two-sided coin. The first side deals with the availability of resources. It asks whether the revenue streams currently in place, principally state and local, are providing the funds needed to deliver a quality education to each and every child and young person in each and every public school and public school district. It also asks whether these revenue streams are strong and stable enough to provide these funds in both good and bad economic terms. In short, adequacy concerns itself with the volume and the stability of the revenue stream, as well as with the sufficiency of those revenues to the task of delivering a sound, basic education to every public school student. The third value, efficiency, or accountability, if you will, is a value that's near and dear to the hearts of most Americans and certainly to most Michiganders. It asks whether the schools are making good use of the resources being provided, whether we as citizens and taxpayers are getting the best bang for the buck, whether money is making a difference, whether the schools are being held accountable for student performance. In Michigan, I think, as you well know, we spent a good deal of time and effort on these concerns. Witnessed the over 40-year effort to build a state assessment program, and for that matter, a national assessment program, aimed at assessing the academic achievement levels of students in our public schools and then publicly reporting those results to the citizenry. And witnessed the more than 10-year effort to establish a state accountability program. First, education, yes. Then Michigan's state accreditation system, my SAS. Then Michigan's state accreditation and accountability system, my SAS, if it comes to pass. And currently, and most recently, of course, we've seen much attention being given to the question of educator effectiveness. Choice, the last of the four values in the framework, also has two dimensions. The first dimension, and the one that usually comes to our mind, is choice of school for both students and parents. Parental voice and parental choice, as well as student voice and student choice, have become, if you will, a cause celebre in this nation over the course of the past 10, 15, 20 years. Beginning are certainly here in Michigan, policymakers have been paying increasing attention to parents and students. Power or right to choose the type and setting of the schooling that will be provided to their daughters and sons, I should say, to parents and other citizens. As you well know, in this state, this increasing attention led to the legislature's 1993 establishment of the... and the rapid growth of charter schools or public school academies. The Michigan Legislature in 1996 further enhanced parental and student choice in its adoption of the Schools of Choice program. And here we might ask, what needs to be done to ensure Michigan's charter school movement does indeed evolve into a meaningful and important school reform? And what needs to be done to address the sometimes negative effects of the Schools of Choice program? For example, further segregation of students by race and socioeconomic status. The second dimension of choice, as it's applied to public education, usually goes by the name of local control. The extent to which educational decisions should be left at the local school, community, or district level are centralized at the state level, or for that matter, at the federal level. It would seem that there's no question with that recent years have seen an upward and a centralizing movement, a centralizing movement of authority and decision-making in American public education. However, in Detroit, we saw this movement play out in something of a ping-pong fashion. First, we had the decentralization effort of the 1970s, then the recentralization of the 1980s, followed by the state takeover in the late 1990s and 2000s, and then a return to an elected board in 2005, followed not long after by the appointment of an emergency financial manager in 2009. And then a rising call beginning in 2010 for mayoral control of schools. But back to our main argument. We're suggesting that these four policy values might serve you well as an organizing framework as you move forward in your investigation. However, a word of caution, and probably is an order here. While one might attempt to proceed in orderly fashion in facing one's reflections on these policy values, it's difficult to treat them in sequential order. This is because these values not only are closely interrelated, but they actually compete with one another. And as we have noted elsewhere, and I would quote from our 2002 primer on Michigan school finance, "The underlying values, demands, and interests that drive public policy decisions are often mutually incompatible. In short, they compete with one another. These values, demands, and interests, all vitally important to us as American citizens, include equity, adequacy, efficiency, and choice. But when taken together, they all cannot be given equal weight. An answer to one will influence the answer to another. But that is inherent in the nature of the public policy process in our nation and state. And coming to an acceptable balance among these competing values, demands, and interests, is the continuing task of the citizens of the state, you, your elected representatives." Let me now turn the chair over to Michael to share with you some specific information and some ideas we have about muted reforms in Michigan education.
Okay. Well, I want to thank the board and Mike for the invitation to start a discussion that I think the time is right for this. We may be at a point where we can ask whether or not our schools are adequately resourced. We can take a look at the outcomes that we've seen in our public schools in recent years and begin a debate. And there are... As Phil suggested, there are competing values and no easy answers here. I put together a few slides to summarize some analysis of educational outcomes and talk a little bit about resource levels. And I'd like to start with, to the extent we can compare how Michigan is doing with other states, the data source that I like to use here, I take my cues from assessment experts, is the so-called nation's report card, National Assessment of Educational Progress. I think it gives you a pretty good basis to see how Michigan is doing in comparison with some other states. Assessment experts point to this assessment as being a high-quality instrument, with particular emphasis on the measurement of math skills. It's not a high-stakes test, so it's not subject to the criticism that there's a lot of teaching to the test, and it's a general indicator of performance. I've got a few slides here that rank the states according to some measures of improvement over the years on reading and math tests. And this first slide, I apologize, it doesn't show up all that well on the screen. This is a ranking of the states by a composite of the scale scores of the states for grades four and eight, reading and math, and the measurement encompasses all students. And it shows the gains and the scale scores achieved by the states between 2003 and 2011. And you've probably seen, if not this presentation, similar presentations, and Michigan is well down in the ratings. We happen to be 47th out of 50 states in the District of Columbia here. There are many causes for these lack of gains. It's not to say that this is the schools doing or the teachers doing. I mean, later on, we're going to touch on what has happened to income levels in the economy in this state. But I think that it does give us an idea as to the challenges we have in front of us in terms of educational outcomes for children in our schools. Another state that I like to point out in these rankings, and I'm sure you've heard much discussion of the performance of the public schools in Massachusetts. Sometimes I think it's useful to take a look at a state where the outcomes appear to be Policy decisions, financing decisions, organizational decisions seem to have paid off. So we'll kind of keep Massachusetts in mind a little bit as a model that you all might want to look to as this project moves down the road.
The way we still hear a little bit of that Massachusetts accent in you, so...
Yeah, you know, Mike, I've been in Michigan a long time, and I still haven't cloned it out. If you listen to my wife Joan speak, I mean, it sounds like she just came out of Boston last week. Here is the same ranking of the states according to a composite measure of gain scores. This measure encompasses only the children from low-income families, food and reduced-price lunch children. Here, Michigan is 31st. Massachusetts is third. When you think about why is it that Massachusetts is doing so well, it's probably a very complex set of answers. Couple of things to look at is that way back in 1993, Massachusetts did... The legislature passed a piece of legislation called the Education Reform Act. It set ambitious academic goals for their public schools. It introduced a high-stakes test for high school graduation, and it did provide substantially more money for the public schools. And the lion's share of that additional money was targeted to the urban schools. And the lion's share of that additional money was targeted to the urban schools. You know, we're all aware of the debate about the relationship between resources and outcome, but I would submit that we have, in recent decades, learned lessons as to the best use of resources. I think educators know what to do with resources now, and I think it has paid off in Massachusetts. The third slide that I, this will be the last slide addressing outcomes. This is a ranking of the states according to the difference between a state's actual performance on these composite scale score gains and their predicted performance in light of the proportion of children who attend schools in each state who are low-income. So it's sort of an actual versus predicted measure for each state. And here, once again, Michigan ranks 47th, Massachusetts ranks second. With regard to resources, we've seen quite a bit of discussion about this topic in the press recently, so I won't spend a lot of time on this, but here we have a look...
Maybe just give us the right answer.
Well, I sometimes get that question, you know, is, what is the right per pupil amount? Is there a correct amount? I say theoretically, you could calculate one for each school, given the children who are in the school and some measure of their needs, but for now, I think we'll just take a look at, this is total appropriations for K-12 education. These are not in constant dollars. And what you can see is that it's hovered around sort of a billion dollars a grade level, but it hasn't shown much growth over the years, and you can see the different sources of this revenue, the school aid fund, the general fund. I think it's kind of interesting, when you look at the history of financing our public schools in Michigan, that the general fund contribution to the schools has really dwindled over the years. There are some good reasons for that, and some perhaps a little more political, but back in the 80s and early 90s, annually, we would see appropriations of 500 to 600 million dollars from the general fund into the school aid fund each year. That has pretty much dried up, in part because of growth in the school aid fund. When we look at per pupil revenues, this next slide gives us a look at this level of funding adjusted for the Consumer Price Index, and the green portions of these columns look at the revenues that are available to the public schools after the cost of retirement has been paid. And we can see that in real terms, the non-retirement per pupil revenue for our public schools was lower in fiscal 2012 than in fiscal 2004. This graphic addresses all public schools. Now, when we look, when you think about the Michigan Public School Employees Retirement System, this is a system that serves our teachers in our so-called traditional public schools. It also serves our teachers in about, I think, between 40 and 50 of our public school academies, because if a public school academy is authorized by a local Board of Education or an ISD board, then they would be covered by this system. And here, again, in real terms, you can look at per pupil revenues to the districts falling over the period from fiscal 2004 to 2012. So we're, it's pretty clear that real per pupil funding for our children has declined over the years. It's also true that if you just, because if you just focus on the per pupil funding, you lose another dimension of the resources available to the schools. And that comes into play when you look at our memberships statewide. And it is true that for the vast majority of our traditional school districts, they have been losing enrollments. And, you know, I don't have to tell you what a challenge that creates for the leaders and the teachers and the schools to deal with not only declining per pupil resources, but declining total resources. And I've been teaching at Wayne State now for going on 20 years, and a lot of my students are public school teachers or school business managers, and I, sort of on an anecdotal but abundant basis, I hear a lot about the struggles that they endure to try to do, as most anybody in the public sector is doing these days, trying to do more with less. Here is just a little, sort of another look at the pressures on school districts to fund the retirement system. And here, I've plotted out the percentage of payroll, dollar amount that school districts are instructed by Lansing each year to contribute into the retiree trust fund, and you can see how that percentage has grown in recent years. You know, it is true now that the appropriations process has changed a bit, and I think if my numbers are right, in recent years, the legislature and the governor's office has appropriated, I think, over a half a billion dollars directly into the teacher retirement fund. And it is true that if that appropriation had not occurred, then the liability would have fallen to the school districts to meet those actuarial obligations. So I think we all recognize that funding the retirement system is a challenge and creating a burden for the public schools. When we think about the challenge of funding our public schools in the state, I think we have to keep in mind a little bit of our economic history in this state. And I found this, I find very informative graphic on the website, put together by the House Fiscal Agency, just showing how Michigan has changed over the decades from a relatively prosperous state to a relatively low-income state. And what this time series plots out is Michigan per capita income as compared with the national average. And you can see that since, really, the middle 1990s, we have been below the national average. I think that this phenomenon manifests itself in a number of ways. I think it manifests itself in that we see more needy children in our public schools. We see more pressures on the public treasury, more competition for scarce public dollars. I think in a couple of slides that are coming up, I think we're going to see evidence that I sort of interpret as a reluctance to fund public programs the way citizens in Michigan did some years ago. And I think this all is brought to bear on our public schools and other public sector programs in the state. So kind of keeping in mind the economic challenges that citizens in the state have been enduring in recent years, I went back and took a look at total personal income in the state of Michigan, and then using state government sources totaled up the state and local revenue that we allocate to our public schools. And you can see, you can see here the plotting. If you go back to about 2004, 2005, almost 4.1% of total income in Michigan was allocated to our K-12 public schools. And by the year 2011, 2012, we were down to a little better than 3.4%. I'm going to translate this in a minute into dollars, but I just wanted to make the point here that, and you know this, budgets are choices. And we've got to take a look at, as a society, as a state, what kind of choices are we making with respect to the support of the children in our public schools? I think when you look at a presentation like this, I think you have to realize that the change you see over time is at least in part due to policy decisions. I mean, I would submit, you can interpret these in different ways, but I would submit that the state of Michigan has made what I would call a, something of a disinvestment in public schools in recent years. Now, how might we translate a set of data like that? Well, one way to do it is to just say, if we were to sort of match today, the effort that we made on behalf of our public school children back in 2005, these would be the changes we would have to make. These are my estimates, and as you can see, the numbers are fairly substantial. And they actually, just last night, I was doing, kind of going through the file of recent analyses that other folks have done on Michigan public school finance, and I came across some work by a good friend and colleague, Dave Arson at Michigan State. And I happened to see that he came out with a similar statistic. He compared two different points in time, 2002 versus 2011, but his per pupil estimates were pretty much right on where I've come out for the year 2011, 2012. So when you think about increasing per pupil funding in the state by $1,500, that's obviously a substantial amount. Another way to look at sort of the changing attitudes toward the public sector in the state, I think, is to take a look at how, to what extent total tax collections in Michigan compare with total income in Michigan. And what I have here for you is a graphic that was prepared by the Michigan Office of the State Budget. And this picture addresses one piece of the so-called Headley Amendment passed years ago. One part of the amendment says that the state of Michigan shall not collect more than 9.5% of our total income in taxes. The precise figure is 9.49, I remember it because I remember when it was introduced. And this graphic kind of shows, over the years, how close revenue collections by the state have come to that limit. And you can see that, at the time the Headley Amendment was adopted by the voters of Michigan, the state of Michigan was fairly close to collecting its maximum allowable limit of income in the form of taxes. And you can see, then, the results of some economic cycles where the gap opened up a bit, and then by the middle 90s, the state of Michigan was once again very, very close to that 9.5% limit on tax collections. And then you can see what has happened since about the year 2000. Even taking us through the Great Recession of 2008, tax collections in Michigan as a percentage of total personal income has fallen substantially, to the point where in 2008, 2009, the state of Michigan had about $8 billion of room underneath this Headley constraint. And I just offer that to make the point that we, again, as I mentioned earlier, I think this is a very opportune time to talk about the resource needs of our schools, and if the political will is there, I think there's some evidence that the resources are there. There are some constitutional limits on taxation that we have to keep in mind as you all move forward on this project. One limit has to do with property taxes that are available to support schools. And as a part of the Proposal A reforms of 1994, this Section 3 was added to our Finance and Taxation Article of the Constitution, indicating that any increase in a property tax rate that will raise money for schools would have to be approved by three-quarters of the members of both the House and the Senate. A very strong supermajority requirement here. Section 7 is, that did not come in with Proposal A. That, to my knowledge, has been in the Michigan Constitution for a long time, well before Proposal A, and that has to do with prohibition on having a graduated state income tax. But I mentioned that first section on the property tax because, and this is just a recommendation, an idea, maybe a starting point for some discussion down the road, but I have heard of a little bit more discussion in the last few years about Michigan reintroducing the local school district enhancement millage, you know, and I fully get it about the political difficulty in getting something like that done. It kind of reminds me of your observations about extending the school year. It's not easy. But this could be a possibility. And I say that because when Proposal A became the law of the land in 1994, it did allow for a local school district enhancement millage. The millage was limited to no more than three years and no more than three mills, but here, you'd have to get an attorney to make the argument here, but there's a possibility, I think, that this was a millage that was in place on that date, mentioned in the Constitution. So there might be, without a constitutional amendment, an opportunity statutorily, if there is a will, to introduce something like this. And this could be done in a number of different ways. The state would have to be mindful of the possibility that wealthy school districts could reinstate the millage and then sort of move ahead of everyone else. There are ways technically to design an enhancement millage that would mitigate an issue like that. It could be a millage that would be equalized by the state. So again, that a property poor community voting such a millage would be able, would be eligible for matching funds from the state because they would otherwise realize just a low yield on a millage locally. But just as an idea of a way to give voters, you know, it's their children, their taxes, let them decide if they want to supplement the state foundation allowance. Another recommendation that might be worthy of discussion, and you've heard this one before at the Board Table and in other venues, that we might want to have some state participation in the financing of major capital projects in the school districts. If you need to build a new school or remodel or fix a school, right now, there is no grant support available from the state. The great majority of states provide such assistance to their local school districts. And we have had survey studies in the state that have confirmed that there are capital needs to be found across our local school districts. A third recommendation that I'll just put forward for consideration has to do with investment in early education, and here, I think that, I think we're making great strides. First, what I have here is a graphic that summarizes some work done by Professor James Heckman, Nobel laureate in economics from the University of Chicago. And if you follow early childhood education, you probably have come across his work. This graphic is really sort of a summary or amalgamation of extensive research that he has done, and his message is that when you invest in April, best to invest when they're young. That will, it'll do the best for them and for all of us. And he particularly underscores the importance of preschool and for help for infants and support programs for infants and toddlers. So here, kind of leads into a recommendation where great strides have been made already. We have this year an increase of $65 million in the funding for early education for low-income four-year-old children. Kudos to the governor's office and to the business community that, I think, became persuaded by research, sort of particularly the benefit cost analyses of these kinds of investments. It's, you'd be hard-pressed to find a better investment of public resources. And I think that another substantial increase is called for in the coming year, and I would say that if we could, this program could be very profitably expanded to three-year-old children. Kind of align it with that great Perry preschool program that was offered on an experimental basis years ago in Ypsilanti. And then finally, a fourth recommendation here is, this isn't an education recommendation, but I think that it speaks to what we know to be true in terms of the influence of a child's life outside of school on the child's performance and ability to learn in school. And we may now have... performance and ability to learn in school. And we may now have the resources to consider restoring Michigan's portion of the earned income tax credit. During 2013, nearly 800,000 low-income working families felt the impact of the reduction in this program that was recently put in place. We've got to recognize that for school-aged children, most of their, great majority of their waking hours are spent outside of school. So the quality of their life at home and in the neighborhoods is very, very important to their success in school. So, and I think also it's important for educators to recognize what we know, and that is the importance of the child's economic well-being as a fundamental building block for their success at school. So I just offer these recommendations as possibilities to consider. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to talk about this, and I think the timing of this is excellent.
Great, thank you. John, please.
Well, thank you very much, both of you, for the framework and for the analysis and for the recommendations. I would just point out, particularly the analysis, Mike, your two pedigrees, I hope, would help us all appreciate the integrity of this kind of analysis and the credibility of it. So I really appreciate that. Question, using Phil's framework, one of the, when we had this discussion that Eileen and Cassandra and Phil Rogers in the Legislative Committee, Bob Emerson and some of the Proposal A architects of the day were talking about these topics. And Bob mentioned, you know, we may have gone too far in worshiping at the God of Equity in the form of sort of more equal funding for following every student, and that we may be, have lost some commitment or delivery on equity, as I think, Phil, one of the definitions you put out in terms of sort of equal treatment and delivery outcomes. I think Bob was arguing that we need to get back more to better, more robust support for kids who have further to travel, for kids of color. And I was struck, you know, by Massachusetts outperforming even among their poor kids, because one of the challenges we face in looking at states, Massachusetts isn't quite like us in its demographics. But if they have a policy regime and a funding regime and a school organization regime that is succeeding with the poor kids who have furthest to travel, and we learned something from that. And so I just pose back to you, is putting more effort behind those who have further to travel a direction? You didn't include that type of idea as one of the recommendations, except indirectly or probably directly early childhood and early income tax credit.
Well, you've seen nationally, from the focus on equity issues, particularly in the 1970s in the school reform movement, you've seen it shift somewhat. And we talk about that in the book that we did, to this concern, increasing concern with adequacy. Not to give up on equity, but to really home in on the question of adequacy. Are you providing enough? We talk about Massachusetts. One of the things, in addition to what Mike noted about Massachusetts in its early days, is they did a cost study. And they said, well, if we're going to set out a program that calls for these, this kind of activity, these kinds of programs to reach these goals, what's it going to cost? And that truly is a question of adequacy. And they incorporated some of that into the kinds of things they did. So they've got a better sense of what you're going to have to spend to provide an adequate education. And I would certainly incur with that.
Thank you. Richard?
Yeah, I appreciate your presentation. I'm inspired to buy your book, which is bad habit of mine.
Copy's to be signed later.
I probably have one in my pocket.
Very good.
Buy lots of copies. The only thing that we made is we sold the manuscript rather than get the roll.
I hear you. But my question is on MIPSers. Now, does this represent legacy costs, costs that should have been paid by the education budget in a previous year that's been put off? Or is there some other aspect to the MIPSers problem that, other than simply having, in good times, we spent more than, or we took on obligations that we didn't pay for at the time, and now the bill's coming due and we're least able to pay it? Is that my understanding of the issue?
I think we're sort of a victim of demographics and the baby boomers retiring. And MIPSers, as I, my impression was, it's always been an attractive but defensible program for the teachers in our schools. And we're just kind of caught now by, you know, the size of the workforce contributing in. It's like Social Security and the size of the people who have worked very, very hard and have now earned those benefits, and the bill becomes due. I don't know if something, perhaps greater contributions might have been made in previous years. One change that was introduced with Proposal A was that what was a dramatic increase in state funding for the schools was accompanied by the state giving the full responsibility for covering the cost to the local school districts. Now, is the current dilemma due to Proposal, to Proposal A? Well, I'd say not necessarily. We've had, you know, Mike mentioned this early, we've had a lot of tax cuts in the state in recent years. Charlie Ballard, why I take my cues on the Michigan economy from Charlie, I think he knows as much about it as anyone. He talks about termites eating away at the tax base and has been doing, and that's been going on for some years. So we are now in a position, yes, where the school districts have this substantial burden. And the burden has been recognized by the governor, and they have recommended appropriations into the trust fund. I don't know if, that's sort of my perspective on it.
Can I mention that I'm on the retirement board by position. The state soup has a seat. And in addition to what I think that Mike said, part of it is the investment portfolio went down the drain during the recession. So to match what they would have to match in order to be able to pay out even the existing folks was a burden. And then also to Mike's point on the demographics, you get to a point where there's even a catch-22 that now new teachers are half and half. They're half in the old system and half in a 401K. So they're not quite contributing what had been contributed. So there's this kind of transition time that makes it difficult. And, you know, to emphasize this slide, to see how much of a burden this is on school districts, with the sleight of hand, I would call, I wrote an article 20-some years ago when it was shifted from the state to the local and said, you know, let's take a deep breath here. We're getting lots of extra money for the, for pupil, but we own this from here on in. That was a smart move on the part of the state. But what ends up happening is, think, it's about 25% now. So if you're a $100 million budget and you have an $80 million payroll, which is kind of, or let's say, to make the numbers right, you're having $80, $100 million payroll, you're paying $25 million right off the top before you ever even, this is the controversy about what goes to the classroom, before you even start to think about buying books, paying teachers, and the rest. Now, on the other hand, it's going to the classroom because a lot of people are attracted to the profession because they have, it's a good retirement system or, you know, had been. So, and then I do think the fact that the contribution's been made on the top, I mean, I found myself in this argument even on the show, the Skubik Show earlier, that, you know, people in the field were asking me, in my role here when Governor Granholm was here, and this isn't faulting her, it was easier said than done. The money was particularly tough then. But don't put it in the foundation, because if you put it in the foundation, it makes it look like we have money that immediately we have to turn over to the fund. Could she pay it off the top? That didn't happen. It's happening now. So I just think if we're not careful, we would probably tempt fate from the governor and others to say that equity, let's put it in the foundation and not pay it off the top. Because it is, in that sense, it's a contribution to, that would have had to been paid anyway, as Mike and Phil said earlier. But I do think the pension fund is really, I learned more about it by being on this board, it's such a function, they have to pay in any given year a certain amount based on what's happened with the investment portfolio. So that can also, you know, when that thing just dipped dramatically in '07 or '08 or whenever that was, no.
And a related question, does the closing of districts like Buna Vista and Angster affect the retirees from those districts?
No. If they, I mean, neither they, hopefully, they're vested. You're vested after, well, under the new system, I'm not sure anymore, but it used to be vested after five years, I guess.
So even though those districts are no longer contributing to MIPSers, they're out of the whole, the statewide foundation, not?
Well, presumably those teachers went somewhere, and that district now is making the contribution. But they're also getting foundation money. So if the Buna Vista kids, let's say they went largely to, if I'm remembering, Frankenmuth and Saginaw. They're getting the foundation for those kids, and then out of that, they're paying, they're paying part of that, a lot of that. This is what, you know, all these other graphs are really startling to see, to say the least. But this is maybe the hidden reason about why it's such a burden for schools to do what they could have done 20 years ago, right in the classroom, because you have this, it used to be paid by the state. I mean, I'm assuming, Mike, you were the advisor at the time, you probably saw that the demographics were such that the state was going to not be able to handle it.
Yeah, yeah. When the Proposal A ideas were surfacing, almost any idea, you know, it had its pluses and its minuses. And the looming retirement costs were an issue, just as the stability of some new revenue sources was raised some questions, too.
I think it was Cassandra, then Dan, then Eileen, then Michelle.
Well, this is really enlightening. So thank you so much for sharing this with us. I just have a quick question. On the one slide, you show clearly that income in Michigan has dramatically decreased. And then on another slide, you show state revenue and constitutional revenue limit under the Headley Amendment. And there's, I mean, there's a dramatic decrease in the taxes. And I'm wondering what you would attribute that to? Is it tax cuts? Is it reductions in property values? You know, what would account for such a dramatic decline on this slide?
Yeah, I think it's, well, it's a series of tax reduction bills passed in the legislature. And to me, it represents kind of a secular change in thinking. I mean, I think that the public attitude toward the public sector has changed in Michigan in recent years. That's how I interpret it. The change we're looking at there is, it's not cyclical. It's secular. It's not a response to either recession or a period of economic growth. It's just a changing attitude about the extent to which we will support public sector activity.
Dan?
Yeah.
Good. So let me add my thanks to the chorus of those being sung. Two quick questions. One is, so when I look at the NAEP score slides that you showed, I look at the top 10, and just for the benefit of my colleagues at the table here, New Mexico happens to be the 11th state on both. So above New Mexico. So I noticed that there are states that I would think of as left-leaning states, and there are states that I would think of as right-leaning states, both in the top 10. And we try and de-politicize kind of education as much as possible at this table, sometimes successfully, sometimes not. I'm just wondering, would it be fair to kind of take away from the fact that there are both left and right-leaning states, if you will, in the top 10, that, like, the issue here is not kind of the ideological agenda? Like, education can work regardless of your ideological agenda. It just needs to be coherent? Is that the right takeaway? Or is it just kind of random? We shouldn't take anything away from that? That's question number one. Question number two is, so one potential path here would simply be to adopt another state's policies whole cloth, right? That's actually producing good outcomes. And rarely, sometimes, Florida kind of last year seemed to be gaining that kind of...
Cachet.
Cachet in the state legislature, right. Whether that's the right state or not, that's not the question. The question is, why, like, what are the relative advantages, disadvantages of doing that? You know, is that a simple way to think about this? And should we? Should we just, like, go to Massachusetts and just, you know, like, take their laws and adopt them in whole cloth, or what have you? Just what's your reaction to that notion?
Yeah. I would say, I think it's useful to look at states that have had some success and take a close look at their policies. And by a close look, I mean, not just that they have adopted some forms of choice, let's say, but how have they really implemented it? Have they done something with respect to curriculum or the inservicing of their teachers? And not just whether they instituted policy A or B, but how did they do it? You may discover states that have introduced forms of choice and have kind of done so as sort of a substitute for increasing resources. And you might find another state that has introduced different forms of school choice while at the same time increasing resources, sort of looking upon a choice, pro-choice policy plus resources as complements as opposed to substitutes. Many different ways, perhaps, to improve outcomes in the schools. And, you know, you could very well find states that are left-leaning and right-leaning that have had that success. But I think, you know, you need to know more than, well, this state introduced a, let's say, a charter school program in 2000, and now they have 285 charter schools. You want to take a close look at the governance and oversight of those schools. What is the relationship between the charter schools and the traditional schools? There's a lot at work here. And then you're also going to, if you're going to look at educational outcomes, you really want to look at the state of the economy in those areas, too. See what the, what employment rates are, what has happened with population gains or losses. So I think you're right not to try to sort of presort the high-achieving states to begin with. Just take a look at what they're doing.
And as you do that, I think you have to look at, what are the negative consequences of some of the policies that they've adopted? I mean, do they play out and balance off, or don't they?
Thank you. Eileen was next, I think, and then Kath, and then Michelle.
Excuse me. So this is the moment where I say to you that after eight years on the National Assessment Governing Board and one on FIPSI, the Fund for Improvement of Post-Secondary Education, I am now channeling for the National Center for Education Statistics. I have no choice but to say to you, Mike, that it's fourth, eighth, and 12th grade for NAEP. It's fourth and eighth for Pearls, I'm sorry, for Tims, and 15 for PISA, Tims and I think...
I can't hear you, Eileen.
I'm so sorry. You know what else? I've got this odd, my voice seems to have descended into the basement. So, and I'm only, this is such a minor point, but I'm only saying it for the board's benefit because sometimes these things come up for comparability. The questions that I have are really because we're all trying to get this into a pot that makes sense so that we can figure out what to do with it. So I'm not, I don't have a political agenda. I just, I do have, if there is such a thing, a public policy common stats sanity program. Because I'm still, we are hearing so much about local district millages not impacting state funding, which is a burden the taxpayers should share and should be distributed. So these numbers have nothing to do with local millages. I just want to verify that. And there's no, these are only state tax dollars that are in your charts. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that your appropriations chart does go through the governor's projections, like, actually goes through 2014. The reporting only goes through 2012. And I don't know if that's available, but given the, I've been talking to members of the legislature, and there is support for improving the foundation allowance. But there's also people who feel very strongly that funding for education doesn't seem to bear a straightforward relationship to student achievement. And it would be helpful if those numbers are available right now to add them to this report, which will be going forward from here. There are, all of us have to make arguments on this, and the more data you can give us, the healthier that will be. There's, when you talk about a reluctance to fund public programs in the same way as before, there's no question on that. And one of the things that I've been encountering when I talk to legislators is the overwhelming concern about the balance between corrections cost and early childhood. People are getting that there's a relationship, which is very healthy. There, in this... There, in this state of all states, we're really worried about transportation, about roads, because they're falling apart now. It's a bill that we didn't pay, just like MIPSers may not have been funded, wasn't funded on an ongoing basis. And then you start adding in healthcare costs, so the choices are really hard. And anything we can do to qualify these, all of these complex relationships, as Dan was asking, can we just adopt Massachusetts and go for it? Will that fix it? But because there are not a lot of connections, we've had, certainly seen the number of districts fail financially, and yet they had a ton of money coming in. Craig cited the, the, the per pupil spending that was going on in a number of these districts. And it's really difficult for us to struggle with how you can find policies. As John was saying, how do you prioritize money? If you, if you know that you're giving money to districts that aren't making good choices, what mechanisms do we have at a state level, for example, to guarantee that MIPSers going forward is, is funded enough to be solvent? And if we divert money to have to pay for the past, how do you balance that against money for the future? So I had one more comment. Actually, it was the disconnect between public guarantees and how promises are made in by home and kept. And the question for, that I would have, one of the questions I would have is, is there any way to be proactive? Have you, in the work you've done in other states, seen anything that really works for retirement costs and for the decentralization of decision-making that we have here? It's a public liability, it's one of the few things that can actually accrue to a homeowner's household tax burden. I mean, it's a, it could be loving, it's, it's a real issue for Michigan. And I'd forgotten, Mike may know the stat, the last thing I, the last time I heard it was about $50,000 per household, but that's, it's, I love the phone ring, I need to know where. But, but there is a number that's, that's pretty, pretty substantial. Is that okay? There's a number that's substantial that is a real burden to taxpayers for the past. And how do we make, how do we find a way as a state to make sure that that can't happen again? Especially when you hear the cries for teachers not being treated well, you know, not being, being abused by the public. It's just, so any thoughts you have on that would be really helpful to us because as you look at these numbers, they are accompanied by people. And trying to figure out how to encourage the people to do a great job right now, especially with the changes we're facing in education, is a substantial issue.
Yeah. I'd say, when you look at Massachusetts, and I, I haven't looked at it in great depth, but they seem to have sort of arrived at a kind of what you might call a grand bargain, where they adopted very ambitious standards for the children in the schools. And at the same time, they substantially increased the resources available to the schools. And I, I think that, that sort of grand bargain is, is something that I, I think we, we should keep in mind.
Thank you. Kathleen, Michelle, Richard, Dan.
Thank you, Mike. Well, it's great to have both of you here. It's great to have a kickoff this year-long or almost year-long review in educating us and the public, we hope, and the legislators may be very helpful. One of the points, when you talk about Massachusetts, when we adopted our, our grade level content expectations, we were compared, there were three Ms, they told us Massachusetts, Maryland, and Michigan had the highest standards. And we were touted as having, you know, this was really good. But the trick is that Massachusetts put in resources. We just adopted the standards and then didn't put in the resources to do it. But that was, that's one of the things. The chart you had showing how we're so below the, the Headley limit is really very revealing. I was not aware of that. That was, that, that really tells, we have a lot of, we could really raise taxes and not be, it wouldn't be hitting, we can't use the Headley Amendment as an excuse for not raising taxes.
Yeah, I, I saw the look of that, of that graphic as reflective of kind of a change in attitude. It's like back, back in the day of, of Richard Headley and even in the first term of Governor Angler, we, we as a state were pretty close to that constraint and we operated with it in mind. And we've just backed so far away from that now, it's, it's no longer an issue. And I think it, it just kind of reflects the, the shrinking public realm in the state.
Yeah, because Eileen mentioned the roads, so difficult to drive. I mean, it really is amazing, you're like on a washboard or as well as you.
Yeah. Starting to feel like Nairobi.
Right. It's really terrible. And yet, the legislature seems absolutely opposed to raising taxes to, to fix the roads, or to attempt to fix the roads. But I liked, I liked your four areas, Phil, that we should be looking at. One of them, the equity one, and Mike, John raised something too about that. I remember going back many years with Al Pelham, you remember Al Pelham in Detroit and Wayne County? He was an outstanding finance expert. He used to talk about equal opportunity means unequal resources. You need to put more resources in the areas that need them the most in order to provide equal opportunity. And he, he put it in that context so that you wouldn't give the same amount to every district, you'd have to give certain districts that have more hard-to-educate children or more at-risk children, however you want to rephrase it, more resources. And that was a whole idea of compensatory education and everything else. So I think that, I think that's still a, a good way to look at it, that equal opportunity means...
Well, very much so. I mean, if you, if you take the notion of equity and apply it to the question of finances, and particularly the allocation of those to school districts, there's been some wonderful work done in the past. And one of the pieces of work really splits equity into three pieces when you look at a state school aid program. One is called horizontal equity, which really in a sense argues that you ought to have a good foundation and a base under everybody. And the second notion is, is called vertical equity. And it says, well, there are good and justifiable reasons for giving some districts more because of the nature of the students they're dealing with, whether it's vocational education or whether it's special education. And the third one was, was what was called equality of opportunity. They did retain it to talk about fiscal neutrality. And that's in effect what Michigan did to some extent with the, with the reforms. And that was to get rid of factors that really were negative factors on what was going to be available in terms of resources, i.e. the property tax back in that time. So that if you were sitting in a school district with a healthy property tax base versus one with an unhealthy property tax base, there was a tremendous amount of inequity in that arrangement, as we all know. And so they really talked about, as you look at this, build the base, put more into it for good reason, and make sure that there are no negative factors working against ending up with an equitable situation.
Thank you, Phil.
One other thing I want to mention.
Yes, Cam.
That Mike talked about was the recommendation on the capital taxing for capital purposes. Because one of the things I remember, we visited a school, went to schools in Hamtramck, and the buildings were really old. The newest building was built in 1998, 1930 or something. And if they tried to levy a millage or a bond issue, they, they couldn't raise enough money because property was worth so little. So there was such, even if they wanted to do it, they couldn't get approval from the Treasury Department to do it because it wouldn't raise any money.
Yep.
So that's such an unequal, that's a really unequal, see, the, the capital infrastructure.
Yeah, I remember that. Some school districts were deemed to be too property poor to participate in the Michigan School Bond Loan Fund.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah. So that, that's, that's an area that we really haven't focused on at all and we really should.
Right, it's not addressed in the Proposal A at all.
But of course now we're closing schools, so we're not building new schools except in certain areas. We've got all kinds of problems with the old districts, with the old buildings, growing districts with new buildings, and how do we equalize it? Anyway, this is great. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kath, for getting that on the table. Hamtramck is the poster child of that. It's frightening on how they just can't raise the money even if they wanted to. And even back when I was at Wayne Rees as a superintendent, the conditions are very unsafe. Michelle, and Richard, and Dan. And who's gonna be last?
Yes, thank you. This was, I thought this was a great study. I think it's very important to look at issues of, you know, the financial aspects of what we actually invest as a state and looking at issues of poverty. I remember looking at, well, there's one thing I want to say, and it's not directed at you. It's, I keep seeing people misrepresent the NAEP scores and not get it right, and what it means in the press, and it's driving me out of my mind. To be considered proficient, you're an A student. To be considered basic, you're still passing, and that is considered a, you know, a CB student. And, and the advanced is a solid A-plus. And that would make about one-third of our population, you know, what, in the schools, not, are in the basic. But people keep missing the proficient with the meat. Sorry, I just had to get that out and because so many intelligent people are getting it wrong. So my question to you is, one of the, I'm, I'm curious about Massachusetts or other states and what they're actually doing. And I was looking at some, some of the research that John had actually called together with folks from Michigan State. And one of the things that seemed to be very unique about Michigan is that we have very high concentrations of poverty. So, and I'm not sure how that compares to other states and including Massachusetts, and if there are things we should consider because of that. And that, you know, it's the, it's where we have, and that's where it seems to be the most difficult to affect education when there's these high concentrations, or large concentrations of poverty in, in our state. And so I'm looking to see what has done in Massachusetts. I'm particularly interested in this idea of balancing that choice and the equity, but also given our sort of unique circumstances around poverty, especially because we also tend to have very big dips because of our industry or manufacturing and car industry. So, so I, I don't know if my question is clear, is, so I'm looking to see, so what are, what are some of the specific things that they're doing in Massachusetts to balance choice, equity, efficiency, adequacy? And are there things that we should be paying attention to in Michigan, given sort of our unique, what makes us different from these other states? Sorry.
That's a good question. I think you'd almost have to look first at what each of the states is doing, or at least at the states that you're interested in, what they're doing, how they're funding public education, allocating those funds out, and what is it that they do with that? And, and that might be helpful to be able to take a look at that and see, I mean, what is it that Massachusetts does, for example, in addressing this business in vertical versus what Michigan is doing? And is, is there something there to be pursued and followed? But short of looking, I think, at all of those, or at least at the programs in effect in the states you're looking at, I mean, Massachusetts and Florida were mentioned. I, I think you hear that Massachusetts is doing many of the things, and you hear about some of the wonderful things of Florida, but you also hear about some of the negative consequences that are, that are coming about in Florida. So you've got, you've got to stop and look at all of these.
Right.
Just a couple of differences between Michigan and Massachusetts that come to mind is, the, the approach toward school choice is, is a bit different. In Massachusetts, as I understand it, they have one authorizing entity, it's a state-level entity that will, that will provide for the, the creation of a charter public school. I don't think they have the level of charter and choice activity that we have here in Michigan. Because the other, the other difference is that in, in terms of per pupil support for the schools, Massachusetts in 2011 invested about a little over $13,100 per pupil, comparable figure for Michigan at the time was about $10,800. I'm sure there are other very important differences to those of the, just two that come to mind.
Yeah. So the, the entity, I just, I, I did have some other, just a couple other questions. One is the, the state revenue, this, this graphic here that looks at the Headley Amendment. So this goes to, to nine? I'm just wondering if there's any, what, if you know what it was for more recently in the last, like, four years?
I don't, but I think I can find out and get that to, to the board.
If it's gone, how, because there was a lot of changes in '11 that seemed to, I'm just, my guess is that, well, maybe you should guess, is that it's, there's less taxes going towards the, would that be fair to say? That there's...
That the gap has widened even more in recent years?
Yes, since '11.
Well, it could be. I mean, the, the incomes have been recovering and some additional tax cuts have been proceeding, so it's, it's possible. But I, I will be happy to try to track that down for you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard and Dan, and we're finished with Craig, and then we're gonna have our students.
Okay. I had two issues, I guess, and I'll, I'll throw them out instead of both at once. I'll throw out one and then I'll come back to the other. The one is, when we talk about comparing Michigan performance with other states, for a decade or more, our admission to, to the system, to kindergarten, has been at December 1st, while the vast majority of other states have been at September 1st. So our student body is about five, that's about 5% of your lifespan when you're five. And so, so our kids are 5% younger or thereabouts, going through the system. And when you're younger, you don't, you don't learn quite as much or quite as efficiently as, as, as your peers. Could this account for, this could account for perhaps 5% of why we're behind other states? Now, this board last year made the decision to raise the, the age level for children entering in. But this is a circumstance that I find rarely, if ever, mentioned or acknowledged when, when we're comparing Michigan students and their performances. I realize that when you're comparing gains on, on the NAEP, then that, that's not relevant to that particular one, although conceivably it could be if kids are less able, less able to learn, then they're probably less able to gain and such. But, but your thoughts or response to that? And is our raising the, the age level of children going into kindergarten going to pay off in, in perhaps stronger performance across the board?
Yes, my impression is that the entry level age to kindergarten might have a sort of a marginal effect on these gain score measures that we have here. If we looked at level scores, what we would see over the years from, from the early 90s to today is that Michigan has slipped quite a bit. I don't know if the, the policy that you mentioned has been in place over that time. I, I think it may, it may be a contributor, but my sense is it wouldn't be a, a big one. But there, there are early childhood experts who would know a lot more about that than, than I do.
Okay. I do think another factor that you inferred earlier was we're at about, what, 40% of our kids are in free and reduced lunch? And that's dramatically different than even 10 years ago when the auto industry was thriving. So these are all, a lot of the points being made today. Dan, and then Craig.
Three quick things. One is a correction. So on composite score gain, I'm sorry, did you have something else?
That was my fault. I didn't realize it was a follow-up, so thanks.
Yeah. And, and the other is related to this because it is a question, you know, is the role of preschool, is it, is it development which happens whether we naturally, because of internal growth, or is it because of external experience? Preschool can make up for the latter, but not for the former. And I, I have seen the claims made for money invested in '03 and '05 here, and as, as you presented here, and I've read one or two of those studies. And I guess my question is, is there any documentation? We've had Head Start in Michigan for about 50 years. Is there any documentation that the money we've invested in Head Start in Michigan has saved us money in the long run for, for school costs? We, we do have experience with preschool programs. We, we have a couple of generations now, there ought to be, rather than, the studies that I've read have depended on speculation. I've read have depended on speculation. Is there actual proof that Head Start has made a difference?
There is definitive proof that high-quality early education, such as the Perry preschool program and Ypsilanti, has had great benefits to society. I think the departments, a few years ago, did an evaluation study of the Great Start program. And if I'm remembering it correctly, it was a well-done study that did conclude that there were substantial social benefits resulting from that initial investment. But the studies of the Perry preschool experiment sort of remains kind of a gold standard of educational research, and that the data have been scrutinized by many teams, and the return on investment is very substantial.
And that has been used to justify further investment in Head Start, which is why I ask, has this small, less than a thousand-student study been able to be replicated on a grand scale as supposedly Head Start was?
To my knowledge, no. It would be, the returns on the Perry program were so dramatic, in part because the Perry program was an expensive, very high-quality program. I mean, the pupils-to-teach ratio was about four or five to one. All of the teachers in that program were veteran teachers with dual certifications in early childhood education and special education. And as you know, the program included an in-home visitation weekly. If we wanted to do the Perry program today in Michigan on a per-pupil basis, it would probably cost eleven thousand dollars a child. Given all of that, the expected benefits would be, gosh, it could, you know, estimates have been as high as twelve or thirteen dollars of benefit for each dollar invested in the program. Head Start is something different, different goals, different rules, different-
Hasn't reached out so far, timeframe.
Right, oh yeah. It hasn't been scrutinized as closely as Perry, but I would say the department study a few years ago was about the best study that I've seen on it.
And that's the one we have discretion over, so we're comfortable with the continued investment in that. You know, it's interesting that, well, I'm going to let it sit because we've got students waiting. Dan, and then Craig.
I'm not going to let it sit. It's actually one of my three things, so I'm going to come back to that. I'm really glad that early childhood has become a part of this discussion. So, two things, I guess. One is, just a quick correction. On the composite scale, score gains chart, the top 10 end with Pennsylvania. So, New Mexico squeaks in, they're number nine. For the folks, no.
I'm a New Mexico resident, tuning in.
That's right, that's right, that's right. But for colleagues here who are just trying to figure out who the top 10 is, Pennsylvania is the number 10. So, you know, I almost don't even, so I was just going to, like, throw early, just going to say, thank you so much for including that as one of your recommendations. Like, so the Perry preschool study is very convincing, the Great Start readiness program study that was shared with us at this table here within the last, I don't know, eight, nine months, was very convincing. And while the Head Start studies suggest that there's some washout at third grade, once again, the evidence now, given the decades of research that have been done, suggests that you see tremendous gains down the road in terms of incarceration rates, in terms of employment, in terms of high school graduation, retention rates, special education rates, and the cost savings are tremendous, which is why we do see bipartisan support for early childhood education investment now in the state. Thank goodness. And given your statement, Michael, I think it was you that made this statement, that you're hard-pressed to find, I think you said, and it may have been a casual statement, but my sense is that you don't make too many casual statements, that you would be hard-pressed to find a better investment than investment in the high-quality early childhood education, I think is striking. And I continue, so I just want to use this opportunity to continue to encourage this table and the folks at this table to spend more time and energy on conversations about early childhood education. What does high-quality early childhood education look like? How can we create policies that support the implementation and, you know, practice of high-quality early childhood education? There's a lot of stuff in the K-12 world to think about and worry about, for sure, and I think the evidence is accumulating that the time that we spend on some of that would be better spent talking through how to better support high-quality early childhood education in this state. And that's part of our purview.
Why don't I commit to get on agenda planning that opportunity? Because I think some of the differences, or perceived differences, are about the quality issue, and I think the more that we can say there are some programs that aren't of high quality, that's what we're struggling through right now with our new Great Start department as we got folks in from DHS and other places, even kind of traditional daycare. So, I think there's a way for us to help frame that, and then support high quality, not support low quality. Because I think what you can fall into a trap on is early childhood for early childhood's sake, when it's, what's the, okay, I'm trying to-
Thank you so much. And I guess implicit in my question is, is Head Start high-quality? And if it's not, how are we going to avoid that mistake of spending a lot of money on a program that isn't high-quality?
We have a lot to offer on that, no?
We spend money on the Great Start readiness program, which is not Head Start.
Right.
It's a different program. So, I'm not, like, I think the conversation's worth having, as long as what we're having is a conversation about how to make sure Great Start is a high-quality program, not about Head Start, which-
I'll commit to bring to the table that we'll work on that and suggest a timeframe.
And that's, by the way, not to concede that Head Start's not a high-quality program. I would actually take issue with that. I think it's implemented kind of, you know, a variety of different levels across the country, and I wouldn't want to ever see it defunded. Rather, I think that what we should be doing is making Head Start high-quality, universally high-quality around the country.
That's that U of M law degree that got that last caveat in. And on that point, I guess, for a moment, Kath and Michelle, if you had an in-coding Craig.
Well, I agree with Dad. We've been pushing for high-quality Head Start for a long, long time, and we have raised, we have developed standards and high-quality standards, which we've approved. So, we've taken a lot of steps in that direction. But I wanted to mention to Richard that the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis, a number of years ago, did a very good study on the value, the investment of preschool dollars and the return on the investment. And I think that study helped to convince a lot of businesspeople that this was the way to go. They came here, the president of the bank came here a few years ago and met with a lot of people, and they really started meeting with the business community, and they were great force in those days. So, that was a very high-quality study, Richard, that was highly regarded.
What's the name of it again?
We'll get you that. It's, in fact, he did it 10 years ago first. He's the Federal Reserve, he had been the Federal Reserve Chair in Minneapolis, the sub-chair, and we'll track that down.
Aronet.
There we go. Michelle's on this topic?
Yep.
Okay, please, and then Craig.
It's on finance. It's in, is it?
The only reason I'm, no, please, go ahead.
Okay. I've just been reading a lot of sort of debate now about the retirement program, and some folks, somebody even characterized it as like a zombie or something, that was eating schoolchildren or, so it's very politicized. I was just calling earlier yesterday. So, it's becoming really politicized, and I see that it's almost like saying, you know, the argument is that it's the selfish, overpaid, overcome, kind of feeding into that anti-public investment or public sector funding sort of argument that sometimes takes the frame of demonizing public servants. But so, I'm wondering with this, I feel that there's going to be some, you know, it's coming to a head, what's going to happen with this retirement program. And, you know, without people really understanding all the strains that have defunded the retirement program. So, I'm wondering if you have any, given any thought to, you know, recommendations or ideas of where we should go in the future with what matters? So, any thought?
How to solve the problem?
I have one while you're thinking, just, I do think there's danger, as Michelle's pointing out, that one of the reasons we get high-quality people is because we've had a fair and a good system that we need to continue to fund. And then I think they tried to mitigate these problems with this kind of split pension for new employees, kind of like the auto industry and others have done. But yeah, I think it is, we need to be careful because it's, these are legitimate costs. They're high, though. It's just to point out, they're very high, whether it's the state picks it up or the local. And where I was caught a little bit this morning even on the radio thing is, this is, if you're supporting classroom teachers, you're supporting the classroom. Now, maybe not the way that people are trying to see the dollars funneled in for books, but if you're supporting teachers with good pensions, you're also supporting the classroom. And that's what, one of the reasons people are attracted to the profession.
I'm almost done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, because one of the, one of the things that I, you know, I don't understand why schools have to opt out of it. And there's so many schools, given the preparation of charters and now cybers, that have the right to opt out. And so, I'm just, you know, looking, if, I'm assuming that in Massachusetts, it probably, because they have one entity that falls under a broader, you know, it's more controlled, that they're less likely to have sort of this drain on the retirement program. So, I'm just wondering if that's, that's something that's been looked at? Because as we keep going and going and going with this policy of unlimited and without any sort of, with more and more schools and teachers being compensated less and also being compensated less through the retirement program, it just seems it's going to be inevitable. And there's a lot of teachers out here that are very concerned about their pensions, and that there, what's happening in Detroit, what their pensions may be, come to a head for them as well. So, I, you know, I, given an analysis of it, and I think you've hit on it, that there's been sort of this disinvestment in the system, but it doesn't, I'm sort of struggling for, what are some fair and good and ways to, you know, to maintain it without, you know, just saying, well, we're just, it's gone broke, and we're going to cut everybody's pensions in half, or something like that? And we're doing it for the kids.
Yeah, I mean, I think as a backdrop to that discussion, and those are critical issues, and I agree with Michael that, A, the retirement, you know, people don't go into the profession for the retirement system, but it's a part of the security and the attraction. But I think, you know, keep in mind that over the last decade in Michigan, real resources for the public schools has dropped about 10%. You might find estimates are plus or minus a percentage point, but that's the reality, and within that constraint, we've got to, we've got to fund the classrooms, we've got to fund the retirement, we've got to have competitive salaries, we've got to deal with the fact that public schools are chronically short of science teachers, mathematics teachers, special education is also an area of chronic shortage. And we've got to recognize that there is a market out there for professional talent, and the schools must be competitive.
And then with Craig, otherwise the kids are going to get on the bus and leave us before they're, before they're-
Well, one comment to Phil is, and I don't know if it's part of a recommended framework or it's overarching, but I think that the study of effective vigilant governance has to be part of any kind of a long-term education plan for the state. Governance.
I would agree.
Okay. Second, you saw that, that looked like bell chart on student enrollment peaking and declining? Well, if you didn't catch it, SEMCOG is projecting in the next 10 years that the student-age enrollment population in southeast Michigan is going to drop by 112,000 kids, which is 13% drop in 10 years. And I think part of any short-term or long-term policy framework has to focus on, what do you do with districts in precipitous decline? The combination of choice, charters, and demographics. What do you do with unused buildings with no particular resale value? And should a funding formula actually provide more money to a district in decline in enrollment than a district that is increasing enrollment, which would be putting our current funding formula right over, head over heels? That's it. Finny.
Well, listen, let me-
Oh, by the way, one more thing.
Okay, no, you said Finny, sorry.
The good news is, in 2035, when Phil has turned 65, the enrollment increase in southeast Michigan starts going up again. So, Kathy, good news for you and me.
Yeah, thanks.
Can I just say, you know, the board members like Kathleen and others know that these are two iconic folks in Michigan who we are proud to say are former deputies here in the department. And as a guy who has 16 meetings left, monthly meetings, before my retirement, I hope that I'm invited back 10 years later as an expert who could help you work through some of these issues. Because on a serious note, it's just, really appreciate this start, John. I think it was a great selection to kick this off, and I'm not under, I'm not overstating this by talking about the iconic folks we have with us today that share their time. So, let's give them a hand, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And maybe we'll shift, because students are going to come in, so we'll take a pause here for a minute, and if you need to take a quick break, might be the time. I know we're behind, but it was a good discussion, and we'll let the students and parents-
I've always liked your dog, Eric.
Well, thank you.
Where are your red ones?
I usually, if I have to print something, I won't have that sent to the rest of the school. But Headley will allow us to, just to share something with. And it's impossible to know.
Thank you.
I just want to, I think I see once you left.
Thank you so much for bearing here. And I have to say that your primary, really unblocked funding for me, I have a very-
Yeah, so, I am, it's 10,000.
Is no one, I am-
You run out, I'm a fish.
Uh, no.
If this goes wrong, then we'll be here till midnight.
We have all about a fish.
Early to younger.
And a couple more guys.
We all are the same.
We have to, I have to, because seeing-
My kids, if you want, if you want to meet, you'd be the guys who run the people's training.
I would be honored if you would accept my card and if you have any things I know on this board, I would, but I need to be-
I could take it to my boardroom. It is like they are always, they are.
Well, I'm a Lutheran minister, so I have a congregation tailor.
Uh, we have our, I grew up in Highland Park, so my, you should just say, we'll get right out.
No, not with this, okay?
They do have their retirement legacy.
What I'm going to do right after the board meeting, the majority vote, I need to do that.
I don't, I, I think, I don't know, maybe it's working at a turn, so.
I've got a doodle.
I know.
I'm trying to get off some stuff, like.
There's somebody else who will feed, like, free up a spot for them, and-
Well, that baby told her.
I want to go get the devil.
Yeah?
Get it.
Don't dare me.
See, I was that kid in school.
Great questions there. Appreciate your opening salvo.
Oh, I'm excited, I'm just, I'm happy to have that out here, you know what I mean?
You know, this is their PowerPoint, but yours?
One of the issue stuff, yeah, making a difference.
You'll be right here, you'll be right on.
So, there are six chairs, you're going to go from staff to staff.
They're going to see you.
She's like, "Oh, do I have my question?"
Vanessa, this is Jeff Brown from Communities and Schools. Vanessa's one of our...
Hi, Vanessa.
So, I think there's a good amount of...
Yeah, and I'll try to come to the table.
You'll be right here, you'll be right on.
So, there are six chairs, you're going to go from staff to staff.
They're going to see you.
She's like, "Oh, do I have my question?"
Vanessa, this is Jeff Brown from Communities and Schools. Vanessa's one of our...
Hi, Vanessa.
So, I think there's a good amount of...
Yeah, and I'll try to come to the table.
After we're done with them.
Everybody does that.
A thousand dollar, oh, thanks.
A thousand dollar glass card for the time of course.
I mean, we try to...
Maybe 74 for...
I'll give you...
Those are old.
Thank you.
She's going to intro me. I'm going to talk about the STEM partnership, how it came to be. And then I'll turn it to you. The celebration.
The celebration.
And I'm not going to talk for long.
Kids are...
It's for growth, so I have to...
You wouldn't want to tip things.
Although I talked to some...
Who they had really nice men.
She just got her stuff.
Thank you.
You have a bit of a...
Exactly.
Just start, just start.
This is our, I have Lupe encouraging me to just start, so I'm going to do that.
Yes, just start.
I want to, first of all, thank all of our guests here before I formally turn this over, and thanks for your patience. This is our highlight of our day, is to see, like, real students and folks that we're so proud of being here, and to see all kinds of ages. So, it's our pleasure to kick this off. I know I've got some of our folks at the table that are, you know... Barb, thanks for leading this and for bringing this up to our attention. And I think I'll turn it over to Vanessa to kind of kick the formality off.
Thank you, Mike. So, we have been discussing science and science education at this table now for a number of months. And so, we thought today we would actually take the opportunity with the STEM Partnership Awards to highlight one component of our science education programs here in Michigan. So, Linda is going to take just a couple minutes to talk about STEM Partnership and some science, some issues with that, and then we're going to turn it over to Barbara Boland. I did want to also acknowledge and thank Senator Hopgood for being here today. He has some certificates to hand out to the students later, but we appreciate him joining us for this presentation, so, Linda?
Thank you. We've talked about a variety of entities that are working on science in the state, and one of the ones you've heard about repeatedly is the Mass Science Centers. And they are located around the state. One of the things that they, the membership decided a few years ago was that they were not getting enough emphasis behind STEM. And while that is not their actual work, it was something that they wanted to see go forward because they feel that's important work, and we need it for the economy of Michigan as well as for good science education for our kids. So, they undertook through Section 99.7, which has $475,000 in funds, to put together an entity that would allow us to push forward STEM initiatives across the state. And so, the fact that some of you talked to Barbara and said, "Could she bring her kids?" Give us the perfect opportunity to just share with you that this is one of the entities. The, I'm sorry, the Michigan STEM Partnership was formed about two and a half years ago, and about a year, or two years ago, they hired Barbara Boland as their executive director. She's been hard at work, she's been to see us, she's talked to you, and she's working on putting initiatives forward to enhance STEM in Michigan. So, with that, I'm not going to take any more time away from the kids. I'll turn it over to you, Barbara.
Thank you, and I don't intend to take a lot of time either away from the, from our winners here, but I would like to thank you very much for hosting us today. We very much appreciate it. And we've all been very patient, and we understand. You've got really good work to do, and so, we're not at all abashed by being an hour late, we're just delighted to be here. And I think the students are particularly excited because they're going to get some financial gain out of the day, plus a day off school. How bad can that be, I guess? Of course, I would like them to be upset at losing a day of school, but, you know, let's face the realities. I've been working for the STEM Partnership since January of 2013, so it's been just over a year, actually, a year and three months, almost, or two months. And we've come a very long way from that very sort of informal beginning that Linda mentioned. We now have a fully fledged board in place as of September 1st with 50% representation from the private sector and 50% from the education sector. So, we're nicely balanced. Lot of work going on in very enthusiastic committees right now, so I'm personally delighted to be helping all of these people do really good things. So, I could just set the stage. Back in June of last year, we had the opportunity to partner with the National Defense Industrial Association and the Aerospace Industries Association to convene a Call to Action Summit, that's what we ended up calling it, that focused on STEM. And so, we had a wonderful event, a day and a half down at the Henry Ford Museum, and we were rather overwhelmed by the number of people who came. We had more than 100 over two days, I mean, on each of two days. So, we divided the participants into groups because after all, this was a call to action. This wasn't another discussion of the problem. We all know what the problem is, and we're into solutions. And we divided them into five different groups. There was one that concentrated on elementary education, oh, no, sorry, K-12. There was one that focused on community colleges, one that focused on universities, there was one that focused on marketing communication, and one that focused on legislative issues and policy. And for a full day, we worked those people extraordinarily hard. So, this was in June, remember? At the end of that day, each group reported out, and the Marketing Communication Committee decided amongst several recommendations that we should do something to bring some attention to STEM. And they suggested a competition. So, we started working, I started working with the marketing team, and then, very quickly, we realized that Governor Snyder was very kindly going to proclaim October as STEM Awareness Month, and that really brought things to a head. So, we thought, well, October is the perfect month to launch and to judge this competition. So, this was the competition that we set up. We would, I'd like to recognize some people before I go on who sponsored this. Without them, there would have been no financial gain for our students, and that's, so this is important. The Hive Foundation, which focuses on STEM, ABB Robotics, The Robot Garage, and TechSmith. And for, they each donated $500, so we had $2,000 to work with. So, we were able to award prizes of $150 for first prize, second, 75, let me get this right, 75 and 50 for second and third. The students were allowed to work in teams of up to three, and of course, that divides the prize money, but they still went ahead and did it. So, I was very excited by that, and you'll see right in a moment, some of the results. We ran two competitions, really, a video competition that was open to high school students only, and they could be homeschooled, as long as they were of high school age, they were fine. And we had limited it to a two-minute total time, and we got some, obviously not as many responses to that part of the competition as we, as you might think, but then they only had like a month and a half or something to do it. So, that was remarkable. And then we had the poster competitions, and we divided the age groups by K through three, four through six, seven through nine, and 10 through 12. So, there were four categories, and you are going to see the results of the poster contest. I can't show you the videos because they're up to two minutes apiece, and that just isn't going to be feasible today. But we do have the winners in the room, and they will be duly recognized. I would like to give some credit to some people who, without whom this would not have happened. Mike McIntyre from Oakland Schools was on the marketing team, and without him, I can just tell you, this just never would have happened. I couldn't have pulled it off by myself. Laura Dillon, Dr. Laura Dillon from Michigan State University, Stara Jacobs from The Robot Garage, and Val Corbett from McComb Community College. So, you see, we had people from quite a spectrum who were working on organizing this. The judging criteria were very clear, there were four categories. Does it send a clear STEM message? Is the work creative and original? Is it artistic? And is there visual clarity? And so, we had external judges, we had some, as well as the people on the marketing team, Tiffany Dialing from the M3 Group, Mark Miano from NBC Education, and Al Latesh, who is with the WIN organization, and he's also a STEM Forward member. So, those people really, we really pulled this off very quickly, and the students have waited patiently for today because we were planning to give the awards at our December board meeting, but then we were unable to do that. So, this is why you came to our rescue. Thank you very much. This is great. Each winner will get one of these folders, and inside are two important things. One's a certificate, this is a recognition of their success. This is the important one, this is the envelope with the check in it, and we will do that later on. So, I would just like to very quickly go through the winners of the poster competition, and we're going to start with grades K through three, and this is the third-place winner. And I apologize that some of these are busy, but that's because they're artistically done. The students are going to give us hard copies of all of these so that we will do something creative. You'll be able to find these on our website and probably in a newsletter that will be coming to your desk in the next month or so. This is, third place is Finley Siegel, and you can see the schools, I've put the schools up there as well, from World Lake. This is second place, this is Maddie Tinsky, and the detail on this you do kind of lose in the slide, but it's quite remarkable. And this is the winner, Ella Barretts from Brick Elementary in Ypsilanti. One of the things that surprised me, but I, from a personal standpoint gratified me, was the fact that so many of our students took an environmental approach to this. They are concerned about the environment, but given the wonderful natural resources we have in Michigan, that to me was a great thing to see. So, Ella and I are both tree huggers, I think. I like that one. Now, let's go to the next category, which is four through six. This is the third-place winner. There's a lot going on here, again, rather hard to see, but there's Mother Earth in the middle with everything else going on around it. This is Cameron Brown from Levy Middle School in Southfield. This is a team, this is London James and Ashanti Galloway, who got second place, and there's some writing there that, again, I'm sorry you can't see, but you'll be able to see it on the website. Thomas Chastain from Levy Middle School, again, in Southfield, is the first-place winner. And that one's quite, very eye-catching, got a lot of... We did hope, by the way, if we had been able to present the prizes in December, we wanted to take these, because there are 12 of them, and make a calendar. We're a little late now for calendar, but who knows? Maybe I can slip in last year's winners with next year's winners next time or something, but this would have been a perfect calendar, I think. This is the third-place winner. Now, this is grades seven through nine, and you'll notice the obvious difference in the approach. This is Juan Roscoe from Summit Academy, Romulus, and this is why Senator Hopgood is here. This is in his district, and Senator Hopgood has, what are they called, are they Senate? Senate tributes to give to the students from his district. So, they will be getting, in addition to their folder, they'll be getting Senate tribute as well, and this would be one of the winners. Now, this is the second-place winner. Again, a lot going on there, and the more you look at it, the more you see. This is Callie Hale, again, from the Summit Academy in Romulus. This is Max Pellic. Max can't be here today. Max is homeschooled, he's from Northville, and he and his sister both are award winners today, but they aren't able to be here. But I had the privilege of meeting both them and their mother at the RoboFest competition, at which they also did very well. So, these are two youngsters who are clearly very much into STEM, but that one is rather eye-catching. Now, we get to the grown-ups, I guess, the grades 10 through 12, and this is the third-place winner. This is Molly, Molly Pellic, she's Max's sister, and this is interesting, changing the way we live, right? Good theme. Brittany Hobenstricker from Pinckney High School. Again, an interesting, very creative poster, that one, very artistic. And this is the winner in grades 10 through 12. And again, a lot going on there when you really look. This is another team, this is two young ladies from McComb Mathematics, Science, and Technology Center in Warren. So, that's the end of my presentation today. I would like to just remind you that you have some, you have representation on the Michigan STEM Partnership Board. We have Patty Cantu, who is the Director of Critical and Technical Education, and Megan Shroben. And you also have a guest today, Mike Gallagher, who's from Oakland High School, Oakland Schools, and you'll be hearing from him this afternoon, I understand, so he's also a board member with us. So, if you have any questions, I'd be delighted to answer any, but if you want to go to lunch, that's fine, too.
Irene, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, the video winners, that's, I knew you were going to ask me that. Perhaps the video winners, would you stand up, please? Here we are, and we'll just... These three gentlemen worked as a team, didn't you? What school are you from?
Linnan.
Where?
Linnan High School.
There you go. Would you like to just tell us what your names are?
My name is Tahazian.
I'm Paolo.
I'm Shangjia.
Congratulations. And we have...
Summit Academy.
And I'm Barbara McRobert.
And I'm Paul Rees-Dunham.
Yes, that was a...
Ray Brown.
There we are. So, congratulations to all.
Could we have other students introduce themselves also? We'd like to...
If you'd like to, absolutely, yes. Young ladies in the middle? These two students here? Three? Yes, sorry, we missed, yes.
I'm Juan Roscoe.
I'm Callie Hale.
Brittany Hobenstricker.
You saw their work in my presentation. The other two young ladies that just introduced themselves, they were part of the winning presentation. Do we have anybody else from back here? No?
Now, these are some proud parents, I think, that are sitting around the edges here. If you wave to us, we'll know who you are, so thanks for taking the time to be here.
And I believe we have grandparents as well. Perhaps the grandparents would like to wave at us.
Yeah.
And that's it.
We'll be going downstairs now for exchange of some of the certificates and some milk and cookies, and then moving on from there, so we thank you.
Gary, and then I have two closing comments, please, sir.
I was wondering if any of the students who are here, if their work was shown, if they'd be willing to just briefly tell us a little bit about their project?
I don't see why not. Anybody want to make a comment or two?
I know you said a couple of them aren't here, so...
Yeah, tell about your poster.
My poster, I did it because, um, science. I like to make like potions, try to, but, and, um, technology, I love my iPad that my dad gave me for Christmas. And engineering, I want to make a machine when I grow up. And for math, I like to study math, and I want to be very well in math, and I like to use calculus. Um, well, for my school, for engine, for E and Engineering, and we had this cardboard challenge in school, we made a fairy tale, but we made a fairy tale in math, it's a house method, where you can, and it helps the earth. And then for, um, science and S, we did a water wheel challenge, and we had to put it in technology, or teacher variance in technology.
They're very fortunate to be in the class of Jennifer Bond. Jennifer Bond is a third-grade teacher, who I give her the nickname Superwoman. From her, I've heard wonderful things about Jennifer, she was featured as one of my STEM Stars in one of my newsletters back last fall. She has her own website, and she submitted, her classes, her class submitted 21 entries for this competition. So, thank you, Jennifer, for all the hard work that you were doing.
John, please.
I just want to say, on behalf of the board, one, the young people here and elsewhere, and your parents and others, I mean, congratulations, and when I see your work, you are the future of Michigan, you are the folks who are going to make this state and make your careers and invent new things, and so, so exciting to see how you're thinking and what you're doing. So, congratulations to you and Linda and our staff, and Barbara and all of the STEM Partnership efforts. It's fantastic to see you back in charge of an important piece of... It's fantastic to see you back in charge of an important piece of our state.
Thank you.
And, you know, I want to thank Irene, too, for her active nourishment and nurturing of the STEM effort here in Michigan. You know, when we look around at the horsepower we have in these disciplines, in our companies, in our universities, in our schools, you know, we can be the place that is the leader in all of these exciting fields and work and, and new ideas and new products. And so you're whipping it into shape and fueling it is, is fantastic and a big, important agenda for Michigan. So thank you.
Thank you. I would, I would just like to correct you. I'm, I'm not in charge. I am the executive director, and I'm working with a very vibrant board. But thank you so much for the, for the compliments and the kind words.
Well, thank you, John. Well said. And Senator, I wanted to thank you for taking time to be here personally for the kids. We, we interact with you, and you know, one thing we talk about when we come back from some of the hearings is, is you don't say a lot, but when you do, it's important, and we appreciate and we listen. So thanks for being here, Senator. And then maybe also I'll ask Kyle Garant, who has charge of our grants, and Carol, maybe, I'm wondering if there's some creativity in our grant structure that we'd have some funds maybe to help support this next year? We could at least take a look at that and see if we could make that happen, but...
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Do you mind if we ask if there's anyone else who'd like to share about their poster before we close?
Or video.
Or video? Would anybody else like to share? Just want to give you the opportunity, since you drove all the way up here.
I asked.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thanks so much. Thanks again. Okay. We're going to move right into, we're close to back on time, but we've gone from an hour behind to a half hour behind. So this is, we're should be okay.
Where are we going to lunch?
And while we're transitioning...
I'm crying because this was, to the point.
Can I pause it quick? Let's just see how quick I am here.
Yeah, that's always a trick with that video, I find.
Are you okay with doing it, or do you...
I think I have, so I'll probably do it. But I can, I can click on it when it's done.
You know how to like minimize and all that stuff?
Should be able to.
It's actually, he counts it all bridge, but it's not incorrect.
And technically, it should be all bridge.
Oh, yeah.
I use all bridge.
Oh, I'm still having fun.
Well, that's a good one.
Well, if you don't mind mentioning...
You just spit it across the room.
Talk to some people, or maybe have some, here, and give my email address.
I haven't watched my email.
Very helpful. Boss doesn't like categorically.
Superintendent of the ISP.
So, oh, Robbie James.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's not unique.
You know, it's like they're so grateful.
Very good.
I've not, I, we traveled through on a family vacation once.
Thank you very much.
And got to Mackinac Island once. That's the closest I've ever been, so...
Yeah, sure. That's fine.
We can, we can juggle seats. These are close.
Different parts with our kids, you know?
It's like a long distance.
Waiting for Michael.
He's first time back in.
Michael? You want to do that one there?
Oh, yes.
Because nobody there to mess up.
Right, right.
Yeah, walk the way to not see the cigarette butts.
I couldn't see you, Mike. It's been a while.
Well, thanks again for your patience, Jeff. Amy, Amber, Sonya, Camille, and Mike. Appreciate your patience. I'm going to turn it, I think, right over to John. But we really appreciate your taking the time to be with us today and your patience and the fact that we're a little bit behind.
Well, I'm delighted we were able to get you here. You know, colleague David Hecker was eager to have he and Jeffrey co-chairs of the community schools this year.
I'm the executive director.
Executive director. And Paul David was eager to have us, give you an opportunity to educate ourselves and everybody about the work that you're doing. And I know I've loosely followed it, but need some education myself about the great organization and the work you're doing in schools, and also looking for things that we can do to be supportive and helpful in that effort. So thank you.
Well, wonderful. Thanks very much. First of all, I just wanted to say good morning, I guess now good afternoon. Mr. Board President, distinguished members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Planigan. My name is Jeff Brown, and I have the honor of being the State Director of Communities and Schools of Michigan. Our Board President, David Hecker, wasn't able to join us today, and he wanted to have me be sure and send his regrets. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity to provide information today about the good work that's being done by communities and schools across the state. To better explain our work from a national perspective, we'd like to start by sharing a, a video with you of our work. So we'll start, start with a little movie, which is always fun for boards, I find. Marilyn? I was, I was clicking it. It just doesn't want to go. Not clicking hard enough.
Maybe it's set to my touch.
That's it.
When I was in school, I did struggle with my grades. I didn't really like school because I was struggling. I didn't feel confident about myself at all.
I felt like I just reached my breaking point. Like, I didn't care no more. Forget school, forget life.
I started working when I was on a younger age, was crap mailing. My life wasn't focused on school.
Public education is designed to provide all young people at a shot with the American dream. Each year, we see about 1.2 million young people who never graduate and never will, which means they are pipelined to be second-class citizens.
For many of the kids that I serve, the idea of what's normal is very different. What's normal for them is the power going out, moving every six months, calling your mom while she's at work and trying to make sure you're not getting her fired.
These children didn't choose to be disadvantaged. They didn't choose to be poor. They didn't choose to not have mentorship. They didn't choose to not have the basic necessities at home.
Our mission is to go to the poorest performing schools and the poorest kids in America. So it is going to the heart of the dropout problem and attending to the non-academic barriers so we could actually free up young people to be able to learn.
In community are extraordinary resources. They're just disconnected from the very young people that need them.
When you link those great resources with a kid that's really in need, magic happens. And you see kids just flourish, even in the most dire circumstances, when there's a caring adult providing them the kinds of resources they need to be able to succeed academically.
The communities and schools site coordinators are the hub of activity in the school. They connect children with whatever they need.
My job is to empower them, bring the community and the resources that are around to support them. They may have what it takes, but they don't know what steps they need to take in order to get there.
If I not have met Mr. Weeks, I would probably not be in high school. He was the one who provided me for anything I needed help with in school or at home. He gave me hope. Gave me a lot of hope, put me back on track.
That's what our schools need to be doing, is allowing our teachers to teach so that our staff, who are dedicated, giving, generous, social workers, and counselors, can get to the root of what's going on with that child and fix it.
Communities and Schools has a unique and critical role in helping to improve education in America. For every dollar invested in Communities and Schools, we return to the community $11.60. There is actually a good economic argument to do the right and just thing.
Communities and Schools knows that the heart of every child wants to succeed. We allow that voice within the child that says, "I can be something bigger and I can be something better because someone believes in me."
You did it! Good job!
I'm getting these kids ready to be successful in life. Our mission is to surround these students with a communal support. "I'm here for you, and you can do it. You can still succeed. I will help you make it through school."
Well, right now I see a very bright future. And I know that when I fall, I have somebody to catch me.
I'm really excited about my future, that I can read and I can do math. I think I could be anything I want to be if I just put my mind to it.
When I was at high school, figured I'd go to college, start my life. My future's very bright. The grass is green on the other side.
For these kids to understand how learning is such an important gift, the struggles that they go through every day, and yet they can still come to school, and they can have a smile on their face, then I know I made a difference.
At the core of our mission is helping young people who are struggling in school. The young person could be facing challenges in any school. However, we find there are many more struggling students in schools where poverty is high. As a result, Communities and Schools programs are almost always in schools where the vast majority of students live in poverty. When we find that struggling students, our mission is to surround them with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. The struggle students face are walls that separate them from academic success. They can be social, emotional, or physical. Sometimes the wall can be cleared quickly, and sometimes the wall is so massive, it appears to be too tall to ever clear. Regardless, if someone is not there to help, this wall of problems will keep the student from succeeding in school. When that happens, it is tremendously expensive for you and me in terms of economic and social expense we will face because this young person is not ready to contribute meaningfully to our workforce and economy. For the young person, it will be tragic because they will most likely never break the chains of poverty. Communities and Schools is a network of independent nonprofit organizations. When we are invited to work in a school, we hire a site coordinator who works every day to help students. The trained professional site coordinator serves as a bridge between the needs of the students and all the resources that exist in the community. The site coordinator serves as a single point of contact for a student, linking students to integrated services, while also playing the role of adult role model, case manager, mentor, and friend. Those services may include mentoring, tutoring, health care, after-school programs, family counseling, vocational learning, and much more. They do whatever it takes to help a student succeed. They work with school administrators and teachers to identify students who need help with their academic performance, their school behavior, their attendance, and other needs. The site coordinator then secures parental consent and involvement, and works with the student to develop a plan of action to produce tangible results. Does whatever it takes during the school year to produce positive results, and evaluates the student's success when the school year ends. In addition, the site coordinator works to the school's leadership to identify school-wide issues, and then rolls out programs, services, and events throughout the school year to address those whole school needs. The CIS model provides great flexibility to respond to individual school and community needs and characteristics and values. Communities and Schools has met the required threshold of research to be referred to as an evidence-based practice. CIS is a research and data-driven model, which brings together the rigor of ongoing evaluation and the best professional practices available to deliver positive results. Both a five-year, third-party evaluation and a return-on-investment study have found that CIS is both effective and produces results that provide significant economic benefit to the community. CIS is the only national comprehensive dropout prevention program which both decreases dropouts and increases graduation rates while positively impacting academic achievement. CIS affiliates meet a stringent set of total quality standards to achieve accreditations within the system, which indicates they are operating at the highest level of best practice as a nonprofit. So in 2012-13, CIS had five local affiliates in Michigan located in Metro Detroit, Kalamazoo, Lenawee, Mansalona, and Tecumseh. And those affiliates serve students in Antrim, Kalamazoo, Calcasas, Lenawee, McComb, Oakland, Washon, and Wayne Counties, covering 17 districts at 51 school sites. And the results of the work of our great affiliates was significant. We worked with over 20,000 students in 2012-13. Case managed 2,332 students. We assisted 98.6% of those students to stay in school who were at risk for dropping out. 81% of those students were promoted to the next grade. And 99% of the students that we worked with graduated from school on time. The average graduate, graduation rate for the students in the same schools that we worked in was 76%. We had 78% of those students improve their behavior, 73% increase their academic achievement, and 76% improve their attendance. So now it's my pleasure to introduce to you the person who had the longest drive coming here today. It's Amy Burke, our executive director from Communities and Schools of Mansalona.
Hi, it's great to be here today. My name is Amy Burke, and I'm the executive director of Communities and Schools of Mansalona. Our affiliate is located in a small rural area in northern Michigan. However, our community faces high poverty, low education attainment, and we, we still struggle from the economic recession. With a total student population of about 989 students, over 76% of them are enrolled in the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. The students at the Mansalona Public School District, 28% are from families that fall below the poverty line. The current number of homeless students is 79. During the past five years, factories supporting the automotive industry that employed many of our community members closed, and several of our downtown businesses sit empty, leaving limited employment opportunities. This has resulted in frequent family mobility movement, and with a student mobility rate of 12.7%. As a K through eight Title I school district, students fall below the state proficiency, proficiency levels in math and reading, and are frequently outperformed by nearly all of the other districts in our regional intermediate school district. According to our school district's education dashboard, 24.1% of students in grades three through eight are proficient in reading and math compared to 35.6% in the regional intermediate school district. And only 5.5% of students were proficient in the Michigan merit exam compared to 17.4% statewide. In 2001, Communities and Schools began providing services to students and families in the Mansalona area. At that time, we relied upon AmeriCorps Vista for program support and focused on school-wide initiatives. Although we were successful in our early years, it wasn't until 2009 that we implemented the CIS model with fidelity, with a full-time site coordinator at each of our three school buildings. With a caring adult in each of the school buildings, our affiliate was able to scale up our efforts and better focus on the whole child, addressing unmet physical, psychological, and social needs that interrupt learning. Located in the school building, the site coordinator builds relationships with the students and does whatever it takes to help them succeed. As Mansalona is a rural setting with the closest urban-like hub over 40 miles away, our community lacks adequate community resources to support all of our children's unmet needs. Therefore, CIS of Mansalona provides many of the services ourselves. Specific services may encompass tutoring, mentoring, a backpack with school supplies, a safe place to go after school, or fulfilling their quest for post-secondary education. We have built a solid foundation with our school partner and are looked upon to assist in addressing needs and gaps within the district and making our schools places of learning and achievement. Since CIS in Mansalona began providing services, the graduation rate has increased from 60.8% in 2003 to 91% in 2013. We often ask ourselves, "Why are we so successful?" But our answer is simple. Our success is solely due to relationships with our school district, community partners, and most of all, with our students and families that we serve. And now I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Amber Carr Kennedy, who is a Communities and Schools of Mansalona alumni. And so, my name is Amber Carr Kennedy, and I would like to thank the Michigan State Board of Education for the opportunity to speak about my experiences with Communities and Schools of Mansalona. I am the youngest of five children in a blended family. My father dropped out of school when he was 16, and my mother completed high school but never went to...
never went to college. My father has worked for Northern A1 American Waste in Calcasca my entire life, and my mother is a sales associate at Walmart. They are hardworking people who did the best they could for their children. My father was often out of town for work, and my mother worked nights. She also suffered from bipolar disorder, which went undiagnosed until after I reached adulthood. In spite of their work ethic, our family never had much. My parents wanted more for us, but really didn't have an understanding of how we could achieve that. My father's frequent absence from work and my mother's mental instability made growing up challenging. By the time I had reached high school, three of my older siblings had dropped out of school. One of my sisters became pregnant her senior year of high school, and she had my nephew a few days after her graduation. When I was a sophomore, my only goal was to graduate and move out of my town. I had no college hopes, and I had no concern for the future. I missed a lot of school because it was very easy to skip. I was not overly concerned with churning in my assignments or completing required work even though I was bright enough to do well. It was this time in my life that I became involved with Communities and Schools of Mansalona. Then, there were no site coordinators, but AmeriCorps Vista members that would run programming. I became involved with a drama club that was supported by CIS and ran by a Vista member named Carol Weeks. I'll never forget her. I loved that drama club. To be involved, I had to get my grades up and come to school more often, which I did. I helped to design the set, choose costumes, and I also got a small part in the play. It was the first time I had ever felt a sense of accomplishment. The next school year, I was asked to help with the play again, and Carol Weeks asked me to help her pick that year's play. I remember how proud I felt that my opinion mattered so much. That year, our drama club was phenomenal. Communities and Schools of Mansalona also facilitated a leadership conference. Teachers recommended national leaders from the student body to participate in the conference, and I was one of the students selected. Before that, I never felt like a leader, and I certainly didn't feel that anyone found me important enough to recommend me. And now I can't see. At the conference, we talked about -- Ross, thank you. We talked about college and future careers. I decided then that I wanted to go to college and that I would become someone who made a difference. It was hard to figuring out what to do with college because no one in my family knew how the process worked. At the time, I had to figure out how to apply for college and financial aid virtually on my own, and considered giving up several times, but persevered because I was a leader. And leaders don't quit. I graduated from Mansalona High School in 2006, almost by the skin of my teeth, and I have not had a traditional education since. I am the first person in my family to go to college. I went to college part-time and switched majors on several occasions. Being in college was exciting, and the possibilities were endless, and there was a lot of trial and error. This was a whole new culture that I could not wait to experience every aspect of it. I eventually graduated with my associate's degree in 2010. Later this year, I will be graduating with my bachelor's degree in social work from Fair State University. Last year, I had an amazing opportunity. Do work for Communities and Schools of Mansalona as an AmeriCorps volunteer. It was amazing to see how much the agency has grown since I was in school. They were now able to offer college access services such as FAFSA help, college application help, and college site visits. They have an amazing mentoring program that helps to place a child with a caring adult from the community. After I completed my AmeriCorps Year Service, I was hired by Communities and Schools of Mansalona as a program assistant to help facilitate after-school programs to enrich our students' lives. When I was a student at Mansalona Schools, Communities and Schools came in and inspired me to be better than I thought I could be. As an adult and a professional, I have the amazing opportunity to not only work for the agency I believe in and know works, but to give back to a community that has given me so much.
Now, I'd like to introduce Sonya Allen, the CEO of Communities and Schools of Metropolitan Detroit.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to share our story. Since 1995, Communities and Schools has developed the local and national partnerships to provide high-quality educational and intervention services that transform student lives. CIS of Metropolitan Detroit's 32 full and part-time staff are serving more than 10,000 students and their families in 20 schools. Our geographical service area includes Wayne, Oakland, Macomb, and Washington counties. Our school-based services range from whole-school programs, which would include the entire student body, to targeted services, which often include small groups, and intensive services, which mostly include individual case-managed students. Investing in CIS yields high dividends for students. During the 2012-2013 academic year, 20 public schools in Metro Detroit invested more than $2 million with CIS to implement our national evidence-based model. CIS then leveraged the mostly Title I investment into a service value totaling more than $7 million. Impact Matters. All case management services are tracked through our CIS National Data Management System, and each student's individual service plan outlines an approach for their improvement in academics, behavior, and/or attendance. And Jeff showed some -- shared some of the statistics, but we're very, very proud that 99% of our eligible seniors graduated, and we're going to have 100% of our students graduating. CIS of Metro Detroit outcomes indicate that the CIS model is making a positive difference in the lives of students. Additionally, at CIS, we believe that programs don't change kids, rather, it's the positive relationships in their lives that really make the difference. Today, an amazing young lady has joined me to share her CIS story with you. Her name is Camille Tynes. Camille attended Southeastern High School, where she received integrated support services from our Communities and Schools Site Coordinator, Teresa Lewis. Although Camille was a very active student in robotics and the choir, she grappled with many personal challenges that could have compromised her ability to prosper. However, Camille relied on her self-motivation and her community of support to continue with her educational goals. She graduated from Southeastern in 2008 with honors and is currently a college student who anticipates graduating from the University of Michigan Ann Arbor later this year. Camille credits her success in high school and her drive to earn a college degree to the relationships that she's built with her CIS site coordinator and other caring adults in her life. I invite you to experience CIS through the lens of Camille's testimony, and it's my pleasure to present to you Ms. Camille Tynes.
Thank you. Again, my name is Camille Tynes. I am an alumni of the CIS chapter in Detroit, specifically from Southeastern High School. Initially, I came to Southeastern High School in 2004, and I did all four of my high school years at Southeastern. And unbeknownst to most people, I came in with a different situation. I came into the school coming into the foster care system. So, prior to, in middle school, my father was very abusive. And so finally, my mother had the strength to take me and my siblings, and we had to run and hide from him, living in domestic violence shelters, and we did that for quite some time. But a point came where I ended up getting put in the foster care system and separated from my five brothers and sisters. And that was the most challenging and difficult time for me. I wanted to give up. I didn't know how to push forward, and I didn't know who I could connect with. But while I was at Southeastern, my freshman year, I faced different challenges and obstacles. But it was my sophomore year, I met Ms. Teresa Lewis, who was a site coordinator for CIS Southeastern High School. And there, I couldn't help but be connected to her because of her personality, her warmth, and her desire to help you, whether that was through telling you the truth and making you feel a little uncomfortable, or through providing you with many services that you needed. I know that we do have a limited time, but I must tell you of the services that she assisted me with. I remember there was a time where I came to her, and we were just talking about what was going on in my life, and I let her know I lost my glasses. And I was struggling in my classes, not because I didn't have the intellectual ability, but because I couldn't see while I was reading. And as soon as she found out, she didn't say, "Why did you lose your glasses? Where are your glasses?" She didn't say anything of that sort to me. She said, "Okay." And she went through the resources that she had, and she ended up finding a certificate for me to go see an eye doctor free of charge, and I got my pair of glasses. And I know that really helped me get back on track academically, but then also emotionally. Some of my struggles has not really been with academics per se, but it's been with emotional issues. And my site coordinator really helped me to push through a lot of my obstacles and struggles. By living on the east side of Detroit, in an area that's just filled with poverty and low hopes, I had a desire at one time to go to Harvard. No one ever told me that I could really go to college and do what I wanted to do with my life. My mother would encourage me at times, but no one in my school, whether it was my peers or even some of my teachers, really believed that a student from Southeastern could make it onto a collegiate level that amazing, we'll just say that for lack of better words. But when I told her I wanted to go to Harvard, she said, "Okay." And she went in her rolodex of cards, and she got me the information of a lady who went to Harvard and was just a renowned woman, and that amazed me. It amazed me to have someone that believed in me, that didn't know me that well, but believed I had the potential. So as I matriculated through the rest of my four years at Southeastern, Ms. Lewis brought many services to myself, to my peers, and also to the school in general, bringing renowned speakers from all across the world to motivate us, to really connect with us. And there was one opportunity that really has kind of trajectory the rest of my life right now in the academic career that I have as well as my professional career. There was an opportunity where Ms. Lewis had received an invitation to get a tour of Channel 7 and to have a lunch with Chuck Stokes. And she asked me if I would go with her. And I went with her, and I got the tour, and while we were there, she was really helping to groom me as a young person with a bright future. She didn't just look at me, "Oh, I'm some charity class." She said, "No, you're someone that you're going to be amazing, you're going to do great things with your life." And as I was there, she was teaching me how to network. She said, "Where's your business cards? How do you do this?" It felt a little uncomfortable because it's like, "Aw, man, you're correcting me in front of people." But what she was really doing was teaching me how to network and how to be professional in different settings, and I know I still use that to this day. Her investments within me has shown me I can do whatever I desire to do. And so I continue to push forward in all that I do with my work now, working with youth to help them really advocate for themselves and receive resources. So, I know for personally, I'm here today because I love what CIS has done. I had class, and I have to work. But when they asked me to come and speak about the CIS program, I was like, "Man, I have to. Ms. Lewis has been amazing." So I called my boss, was like, "Hey, can we switch around my schedule?" I talked to my professor, said, "Can I miss your class? I have to go and tell my experience of this program to really help other youth that are in the school system that need a CIS or need more support from CIS." So I'm just here because I just wanted to tell that part of my story, and I desired to go to college, and she helped me go to U of M, and she actually helped me get a fee waiver to go to my university. I wasn't going to go to U of M because I didn't think I would have the money. I almost turned down my opportunity to go to Michigan because I thought I was poor and broke from Detroit. And she was like, "No, there's scholarship money. We're going to find something for you." And Ms. Lewis directly assisted me with getting the Paul Roberson Scholarship, as well as getting the Chrysler Scholarship. So I really dedicate so much of what I have to her, and I really admire her. I admire her strength, I admire her tenacity, and I admire her willingness to pull her resources together to leverage so many supportive services, not just for my school and for me individually, but for my community at large. So I thank you for giving me this time to tell my story and experiences with CIS and my site coordinator, Ms. Teresa Lewis.
And then last but not least, from the perspective of a school superintendent who works very closely with communities and schools, I'd like to introduce Dr. Michael Rice, Superintendent of Kalamazoo Public Schools.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board and state superintendent on the important subject of Communities and Schools. Kalamazoo Public Schools has approximately 13,000 students, pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, 70% of whom are free or reduced-price lunch-eligible. We're the largest district in southwestern Michigan, the second-largest on the western side of the state. We've grown by 2,300 students since the Kalamazoo Promise was announced eight years ago, and we've had the benefit in the last five years of driving higher reading and math achievement, higher advanced placement participation. We've doubled our advanced placement participation in five years, and we've raised our graduation rates as well. Well, we've also had some notable visitors in the district. Board Member Strauss Invekto came to congratulate the Greenwood Elementary community on a "Beating the Odds" designation last year. Superintendent Flanagan visited the district in 2010, in which he was very complimentary several months after the Vice President's visit. And President Obama spoke at the Kalamazoo Central High School graduation when the school district and community were honored in the first race to the top commencement challenge. In spite of the success that we've had, though, and to paraphrase Robert Frost, "We have miles to go before we sleep." We are a tremendously challenged community in many different ways, not only 70% free or reduced-price lunch-eligible, a little bit less than Mansalona, I noted, but nine of our elementary schools are 80% or more free or reduced-price lunch-eligible. Six of them are 89% or more free or reduced-price lunch-eligible. The concentrations of poverty are particularly challenging. It is more difficult to be in poverty in concentrations of poverty than it is to be a singleton in an otherwise middle-class environment. There's 50 years of research to show this as well. While Kalamazoo has one of the highest child poverty rates in the state, CIS is critical to help us meet our children's needs. CIS helps us coordinate the following: academic support from volunteers, community agencies, and businesses; the distribution of food packs to needy students on Friday afternoons; vision screenings; dental checkups in a mobile dental van; community mental health outreach after-school programming; and summer school programming. Integral to the success of Communities and Schools' model is a part-time site coordinator at each participating school. Site coordinators are responsible for helping to meet the myriad needs that children have and that poor children, unlike their middle-class peers, do not have addressed at home. These include poor vision, problems with teeth, hunger, and mental health issues, which are addressed by us as middle-class parents, as a matter, of course, in the lives of our middle-class children, as well as some academic concerns as well. While no organization can fully meet the non-academic needs of students, CIS helps enormously to remove certain impediments or barriers to success with which many of our students struggle. In recognition of this fact, in the last five years, while KPS has cut more than $12 million from its budget, we've managed to expand our work with Communities and Schools from nine to 19 of our district's schools, of our district's 25 schools. Indeed, three weeks ago, we were named one of four Communities of Excellence nationally in the CIS Network by the National Communities of Schools at its National Town Hall meeting in Charlotte, North Carolina. As the state board looks at strategic investments in children, those that will help make Michigan a leader in student achievement, graduation rate, college-going, and college completion, Kalamazoo Communities and Schools needs to be considered among the top of the list. And I appreciate the opportunity to address the board now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Now, I know we all respect your amount of time, but we certainly would like to answer any questions.
We'd like to do that, Jeff. Thanks. And first, Amber and Camille, just great inspiration for us. These are stories that keep us going and keep us on focus, so thanks for sharing those and the rest of the team. And board members that have comments or questions for our folks. Kathleen, please.
Well, I'm delighted to have this presentation, and I'm pleased to say that I was on the board of the Communities and Schools of Metro Detroit for enough years that I was term-limited a couple of years ago. Unlike the state board. I'm so glad to see Sonya here, and you and Amber were just so impressive and so terrific. I was so proud of you, so proud of Communities and Schools, and Michael, too. You've mentioned Michelle and me before, President Obama. That's pretty impressive.
You were, too.
So, I agree with what Michael said, that if we have a chance to invest, you know, grants and whatever, and I know we do, CIS is the really prime place to put the investments and put the grants. So it's good that we got some publicity out of it. I left the board just after you started as a state coordinator, so I'm glad to see the things are really perking along pretty well. Thank you for being here. You were two directors, and you, Jeff, it's very impressive and helpful.
Thank you, Kath. I think Gary was next, and then John, and then Dan.
Well, again, thank you for this presentation, and thank you both for sharing your experiences from the student perspective. From my, wearing my teacher hat, I hear a lot of the things that you're doing address needs and things of students outside of school, but some of these things have a bit of an overlap. And so you mentioned, for example, helping students to get financial aid to be able to achieve the potential that they have with post-secondary education. What are some things that you might be able to suggest that we can help to bring to more teachers and schools where this program is not currently in existence? Because I wonder how we can support places where your program has not yet reached to help them have some of the same successes that your program is having in things like students achieving financial aid, or in those relationship pieces that you both mentioned were so important.
Well, I guess I'll try to field that. I guess, first of all, you know, in a perfect world, we would have CIS in all the schools of Michigan, so I, you know, I'd start there. But given the fact that that's a challenge right now, and our expansion is moving along but slowly, I would say that the key piece of this, and probably the most challenging part, is to deliver the service through somebody who is a caring adult. You know, it's one thing to have the service or have a program, but as our founder and as Sonia recognized, you know, it's not programs that change people, it's people who change people. So I think that that relationship is the key. Certainly, we have numerous programs available in the state. You know, the Michigan College Access Network is certainly one that comes to mind, and we've worked very closely with them. Amy has been a coordinator for the local College Access Network in that area of Manzalona before. So, I mean, that's just another partner organization we work with. You know, certainly, working with school counselors and social workers is certainly part of our work, and encouraging and supporting, you know, their ability to be able to address things uniquely with students is very important.
Thank you. John?
I add on to that.
Please.
I would suggest, if you don't have the capacity at the moment to have a CIS Site Coordinator, which would be very important, is getting someone from the, in the community that's already established, that has relationships, that has a connection, whether with the school or with the youth, to come in and possibly volunteer their time, and either working with CIS to bring some training on how to leverage the services and resources that you have to assist it. Because I know there are so many phenomenal teachers who bend over backwards, whether it's picking up students from school and taking them off, spending their own personal money. But as a student, I also can see the stress that it puts on the instructor, as well as the services that are, become lacking. So allowing the teacher and the counselor to play their role will be great. So if you could bring in a volunteer, if you're tight with your money, bring in a volunteer, get them the training through CIS, and teach them how to leverage their resources and connect with other community partners and businesses to come around with, whether helping summer employment, that was something also to my CIS Site Coordinator helped with. I did a Gierup program, and I got a job at a Southeastern Village Resource Center. And so that was something that she connected for a lot of the students. So using those community relationships that you already have to get someone in to volunteer until you have the capacity to actually get someone in, like, a CIS Site Coordinator, that's something I would suggest.
Thank you. Thank you, Camille. John, and then Dan.
Thank you all for sharing your work in such a powerful way. Where does the money come from now, and has there been historically, or where's the overlap between policies, programs, projects, funding sources from state or other efforts?
Well, we, our affiliate network in Michigan uses a variety of funding streams. And I would say, you know, certainly, the 21st century after-school dollars have been very helpful in a couple of our programs, notably Kalamazoo and Manzalona. Those dollars have not been available in some of our other locations. We operate in a, in a world where we do qualify, our work qualifies for Title I dollars, so that's a possibility. The new definition of school improvement dollars, the whole-school approach, actually has language in that bill that was just passed in a recent budget in Washington that fits very well with the work that CIS does, so there's some potential qualifications there. We've had long-term relationships with business. We have a significant business investment from a number of multinational and large corporations, both in Michigan and across the country, and private donors. But frankly, you know, our biggest challenge is resources, and I'm sure that comes as no surprise to anybody here. If we're able to put Site Coordinators in more buildings, we're going to have a higher graduation rate in the state of Michigan, and we're going to end up with kids that have more ability to reach their potential, and that's, that's the key. So, you know, we're certainly looking for that. We have not had state investment in CIS recently. There was a one-time investment about four years ago, and we're certainly open to that and would like to consider it. Around the country, there is significant investment by states in communities and schools. $15 million in education in Texas, and another $5 and $10 in Texas, $6 million in North Carolina, $3 million in Georgia, $2 or $3 million in Florida. And, and you know, there's a direct relationship between the investment and the kids served. So our costs run somewhere between $200 and $215 or $20 per student to serve. So it's a fairly good return on investment for the amount of dollars invested.
And Amber, you may want to talk to that guy right next to you there, because he has the governor's ear. Not to put him on the spot here.
This is not my first exposure. Mr. Ruff and I've had conversations.
Dan, please.
But let me add my thanks for coming and presenting, and really presenting such powerful testimony about the organization and the impact that it has on young people, and frankly, the whole community that it serves. And congratulations, so to John's point about where the money comes from, I have some previous experience with CIS, and he's offered that background, and knew Charlie Anderson, who was a bit of a mentor for me when, 15 years ago, when a friend and I were starting our own organization to try and do some good work on behalf of kids in Detroit. And congratulations to you on taking the reins of the Detroit Chapter and the good work you've done. I know a little bit about the challenges that you faced in walking in, and it's, it's great that the organization was able to get somebody of your stature and caliber to run it and maintain it and help put it back on a really solid financial footing. So congratulations to you. So to that point, just to the leverage point, really, one of the things that's always struck me about CIS is the fact that you, so two things. One is that you do require an investment from the school, so the school has skin in the game. It wouldn't, so if you're not producing results, the school can disinvest and off you go, right? And that, the fact that schools are opting in, right, and putting money on the table because they get that it's a worthwhile investment speaks volumes to the level of worthwhileness that you bring, one. And then, two, the amount of leverage that you bring to that. So I, I don't know what the Kalamazoo Chapter overall brings, but I think when I spent time with Charlie, it was something like, and I think it was in the video, but I maybe missed it, seven to one, or something ridiculous, like every dollar put in, there's a ridiculous amount of money and other resources that you're able to provide to those students and school community. It's just, I think it's a fantastic model. My one quick, so congratulations on all of that, all of that, to all of you. My one quick question is, my recollection, and this is very dated, this is probably six, seven, eight years ago, was that at the time, the Detroit Chapter, anyway, and that's, that's my only kind of set of detailed enough experience here to know, was working, I think, so it was with multiple districts in the Detroit area, they were all traditional districts. It was Detroit and Inkster and Warren, I don't remember what they were, but they were traditional districts. They weren't working with charters at all, the EAA didn't even exist at the time. I'm just wondering, like, is the business model such that you're able to work with schools of other governance types, too? Or is that, like, just given kind of what's happened in terms of state law and so on and so forth? I'm just curious about.
Yeah, the general answer is yes. I mean, we do, we, you know, we don't necessarily have a dog and fight. Frankly, what we want to do is go where the kids have the biggest need. And, and you know, the delivery system of the curriculum and the way the system is set up is going to vary from community to community. Certainly, Sonia's had some experience in Metro Detroit of working with a number of different school systems. We're in two EAAs currently, is that right?
Working with the EAA, working with also Ypsilanti, and we've also done some work with Pontiac. So we are, we're going where the need is and where we can, we can serve kids and families.
And I would just add to that, too, that, you know, some of the reasons we're in those building is because they were, prior to being perhaps EAAs or other kinds of systems, they were DPS schools. When, when that transition happened, those principals stepped up and advocated and said, "You know, we can, you can change that system, but I want my CIS folks. I need to have them come with me." Again, I think it speaks to the point you'd made before, which is, you know, there is an investment at that level.
Congratulations, just a stellar, stellar organization, does really good work.
Thank you very much.
Great to have you.
Thanks so much. I mean, Jeff and the whole team, very inspirational, and really helps us understand better. Thanks for taking the time.
Sorry, are we wrapping up? I haven't, I was laying with my, I had a question.
Sure, please.
And it does, it, it does sound like a wonderful model, and so, but I was curious how schools could locally get you into, what finances they have at their discretion to use to bring you in. And so, and I was also, another question I have is, do you tend to work with high schools or middle schools as well?
Okay. So we work in the K-12 space.
Okay, the whole thing.
So, so we're going to, we're going to be in a variety of different grade levels and building configurations. And, and one of the advantages of our system is we're able to pass kids from building to building and from grade level to grade level, so that we don't lose all that data, and we're able to help that child all the way through the system, if that's what's necessary. So this is the crux of the issue, is how do you, how do you launch an affiliate in a community that doesn't currently have one? And so what we do is, we typically will come into a community if we ascertain that there's a significant need, and of course, there are a variety of communities throughout the state who have high need in terms of graduation rates and poverty rates and academic performance. So we have a big list. And typically, if we go into that community, we seek really two, two key ingredients. One is that we're looking for a business champion, somebody from the business community who will be a champion in that community for CIS, who can rally fellow business investment and community leaders around the issues that we're trying to resolve. And the second piece is obviously that there needs to be some type of resources available in the community, I think, from the school itself, Title I dollars, at-risk dollars.
Sig funding, is Sig grant money?
State funding would be wonderful.
Or Sig, the, the school improvement grants.
Right, school improvement grants.
You can use those?
Yep, there's, we can be a vendor in that process. So, so that's a possibility if the school system chooses to use those resources in that way. You know, they have so many challenges facing them that sometimes they need to figure out other ways to keep even some staff that they otherwise would lose. I mean, just to lay it out on the table, that's what happens, right? So those are challenges. What we're trying to do at the state level in my office is to try to leverage statewide support for this work, from foundations, from business investment, obviously, from the state is certainly a goal of ours in the long run, because the sustainability of the work is critical. We don't like to go into a building or a community and be there for, for two or three years and then disappear. It's a disservice to the district, it's a disservice to the kids. It's not the way we operate. It's a relationship-based business, and what we want to do is have significant impact on a culture change in a community. And the way to do that is to be there for a long time, and so that's what we're looking to do. So yes, we're looking for that, and certainly, any guidance or advice that we can get from the State Board would be wonderful. Really appreciate that.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for your leadership on this. Thanks for you all taking the time today and the patience with, with us. And maybe we can just, since there's one last item before the lunch, if we could just go to item D, and is there any discussion regarding the criteria for grant programs?
Give you a second to look at that, I don't want to, actually, I do want to jam it through,
but I won't.
We don't want to give anyone the right impression.
So any, any discussion on the criteria for grant programs that will take up this afternoon in consent? Okay, well, good, then. I think we'll recess for lunch, and John, any suggestion on timing? What would you?
Close to 1:35 if you can ask. We got public.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So 1:30-ish?
Yeah.
We'll look for 1:30-ish. Okay? Thanks all in public, thanks for being here. Sorry, we're running a little late. We'll be back here at 1:30, so feel free to, there's a cafeteria down on the UP level if you're interested.
In a high pad of law.
We'll go to the elevator.